Glenn, I mean, uh...
Fifteen percent off walking discount.
You can tell me when you're ready.
All right. I gotta stand up for the flag.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this October 3rd, 2018, meeting of the Springfield Planning Board to order. Adequate notice has been given in the Sunshine Laws, with the Sunshine Laws. Notice was published on November 22nd, 2017, in the New Jersey Star-Ledger, which is the official newspaper of the township of Springfield for 2017, and was also posted in the Annex Building on December 29th, 2017. Let's do a salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everyone. Can we have a quick roll call, Jen, please?
Yes. Mayor Rich Huber is absent. Mr. David Barnett?
Here.
Mr. Andrew Schwartz?
Present.
Mr. Jerry Fernandez?
Here.
Ms. Sylvian Gwizbowski is absent. Mr. David Pillmanstein?
Here.
Mr. Scott Wischna?
Here.
Mr. Jeff Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Brian Brendel?
Here.
Vice Chair Sharon Kessel?
Here.
Chairman Jeff Tiger?
Here.
We have a forum, sir.
Perfect. Okay, so, uh, we did not have the September meeting, uh, but we did have an August meeting, so I would, I'm sure everyone reviewed the August 2018 meeting minutes. Uh, if I can entertain a motion to approve...
So moved.
Anyone?
Second.
Can I have a roll call? Uh, not a roll call, can I have all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained? Good. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna just change up the agenda a little bit for anyone in the public just wants to hear the order we're going in. First off, the Environmental Commission update, the joint board meeting that was scheduled to be today will be our December meeting. Obviously, uh, it will be on our, the website with, uh, with no notification. There won't be any notice, but it'll be on the township's website that there'll be a joint board meeting in December. Uh, Mr. Schwartz, do you have anything you want to add or tell what, some of the stuff you've been doing?
Uh, really, there hasn't been very much. We've been looking forward to the joint session, and I guess, well, just have to wait.
Okay. Well, that will be December, and I know that you and Mr. Sam Mardini and Ally Miller are gonna be working on that. Perfect. Uh, the next thing we're gonna be doing is, is the T-Mobile application, and then we'll work our, our way down. So, uh, come forward.
Do you want to do the resolution, please?
Resolution?
Oh, resolution, well, okay. Okay. Stay there, stay there one second. Okay, so we had a resolution. We heard a T-Mobile application in, back in, uh, I guess it was July, and the board acted favorably on it. We have a resolution, which was application 2018, which was for T-Mobile Northeast 161, Springfield Avenue, Block 301, Lot 1. Did anyone have a chance to review that, uh, resolution? Any, you want to have any questions or concerns? Can I, uh, get a motion on that?
So moved. Second.
Have a roll call?
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Pillmanstein?
Yes.
Mr. Wischna?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kessel?
Yes.
Chairman Tiger?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Jen, do you have the resolution for that one? Because I only have the two from tonight.
It should be behind you. If it's not, no worries. I'll print it.
Oh, it is, it is, it is, it is. Okay, it is. It is. Here, go on. Okay. Okay, so the next thing we have is T-Mobile again. This will be an application for another, uh, cellphone tower. Counselor here, can you introduce yourself and...
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, we need Sam out here.
Yeah. Sam?
Sorry, Counselor, it's a problem, a problem.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dean Stamos of the law firm of Ferraro &amp; Stamos. Uh, similar to the last application, this involves just an upgrade of an existing T-Mobile site at 200 Mountain Avenue in Springfield. They're just replacing three antennas, adding some small, uh, radio heads behind the antennas. Uh, and we had asked for a site plan waiver because, uh, it meets the federal and state standards since they're, we don't exceed the requirements.
Sure. Mr. Mardini?
So, can I, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
We have so much paper here, should we be looking at something for this?
I don't think so.
No.
Okay, we weren't given anything.
I don't, no, this is...
This is me, this is...
All right, so I'll stop.
This is an application, it's detailed, Stan will tell us.
This is, this is a review by Sam. It's just an administrative review, and then we just do a resolution.
Okay, understood.
You'll see in about two seconds.
You, you gave a Mountain Avenue address? This, the agenda says Cornell Parkway.
That's one Cornell Parkway.
Mountain Avenue was the last one, this one's One Cornell...
No, the other, the, uh, last one was Springfield Avenue.
No, the resolution that we heard last time was Springfield Avenue. The application he's presenting on is 2018C, which is T-Mobile Northeast One Cornell Parkway. He said the wrong address. It's okay. I know you're excited about the Yankee game.
Mr. Chairman, uh, this is administrative review, as you know. They submit an application that includes the plans and, um, consent from the property owner, and they submitted a letter from the structural engineer, uh, basically given us certification that the additions, uh, to the tower, uh, will not compromise the integrity of the tower, and all the paperwork is in order, and you have a memorandum from May stating that, uh, the board can grant the, uh, the waiver site plan.
And this meets all the state standards based upon your review?
Yes.
Perfect. Uh, Mr. Keans, you have anything for the board before...
I do not. What we did was because I had talked to Sam, I had talked to counsel, I prepared a favorable form of resolution because I think it is virtually, if not 100% identical, 99% identical to the last application. So, there's a resolution in front of you, uh, that the board could act on, just memorializing your action because it's an administrative review, as Sam said. They provided certification indicating that they're in compliance with all state requirements under the municipal and U.S. law.
Thank you, I do have it. Anything from the board, Mr. Rosenberg? No?
No.
Jerry? No, no, no. None down this way? Okay, seeing none, uh, can I entertain a motion to approve this application?
So moved.
Uh, can I have a second?
Second.
Who's fighting for second? Jen?
Mr. Pillmanstein?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kessel?
Yes.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Wischna?
Yes.
Chairman Tiger?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Perfect. And then, in, in the spirit of that, we approved it, as, as our esteemed counsel mentioned, uh, we have the resolution to adopt at this meeting. I'm just gonna pass it down, see if anyone has any questions to look at it, and I'm gonna pass it this way as well. Uh, it's, like, as Counselor said, it's 99.9% identical, with the exception of the addresses and so forth. Um, please review it, see if you have any questions or concerns, and then we can entertain a motion to adopt that, but let's, let everyone review it first.
I am not wrong. The block and lot here is not...
Block and lot is my block and lot, yeah.
Yes.
It was probably a typo on my part, apologies.
Okay, so...
At least someone's looking at it.
That's good. Scott, uh, Scott, we're a good addition to the board this, uh, you know? So, let's make sure that that, do you know what the block and lot is, Counselor? To confirm?
3903, Lot 16.
I don't have the resolution. Uh, Scott, can you...
What do you, so, the resolution says it's Lot, Block 1202, Lot 35?
No, it's 3903, Lot 16.
Okay, so let's...
We'll just edit the resolution.
Let's, let's take the resolution, and let's let Glenn...
Well, no. She can just correct it, just adopt it. It's a Scribner's error.
Okay.
Just adopt the resolution as drafted with that change noted everywhere where it belongs. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, can I, can, what is the correct block and lot number, just one more time?
3903, Lot, Lot 16.
Okay, because that's not what's on our agenda either. The agenda's got it listed as 140, Block 145, Lot 18.
That is incorrect.
Okay.
Okay, so, we're gonna go with what Sam has on his official stuff?
3903, Lot 16.
Okay, so can I, 3903, Lot 13?
16.
16, 16. Okay, so can I entertain a motion to approve application 2018C, which is T-Mobile, Lot, uh, Block 3, 3903, Lot 16, and we'll amend that resolution anywhere it's deemed necessary throughout that resolution? Can I have a motion on what I just said?
So moved.
So moved with that corrected.
All the way through the resolution.
All the way through the resolution. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kessel?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Pillmanstein?
Yes.
Mr. Wischna?
Yes.
And Chairman Tiger?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Perfect, thank you. Do you want to state on the record which team you want to win, or...
Yeah.
Okay. Good, good. Okay, so the next, uh, I thought I did... Here, just check, I'm pretty sure I did.
You can just change the cover pages and stuff, because you have it in Word anyway.
Okay, so, uh, next app, next, uh, thing we're gonna discuss is an update from Sam Mardini. Um, Sam, if you want to come up, uh, over, this board had asked the governing body to look into the Saks property. Uh, I know that, uh, the governing body just very recently passed a resolution looking into having the planning board deem the area of, in need of redevelopment. Sam and others of us have been meeting with property owner, and I figured this would be a good opportunity for him to update the board. Next month, November 1st, at 6:30 in this room, the board will hold a hearing on whether that we should, in fact, recommend to the governing body that it is in an area of redevelopment.
I, I don't think there's anything else for me to say.
Oh, sorry, go ahead. Well, you can give high level.
Um, yeah, exactly what the, the chairman said. Uh, we, uh, the Township Committee passed a resolution requesting the planning board to initiate, uh, a study to determine if the site or part of the site can be designated as an area in need, and, uh, I have to tell you, I was at the site yesterday with our redevelopment planner and the applicant's planner, and I went inside the building, and, and without even doing a study, I can tell you that, that site is an area of need. It's, it's in a very, very poor condition, it needs, needs to be dealt with, and needs to be dealt with soon. Uh, the township, uh, the town, the planning board will be hearing, uh, will be receiving a report, uh, from our redevelopment planner, and, uh, we will, you guys will have a, a public hearing, uh, to, to make that determination, and, and then, uh, hopefully, uh, after that, Township Committee will designate that area as an area in need. We are, uh, meeting at the same time with the property owner and, uh, and township officials. We met twice with them, they already gave us a proposal of what, uh, they would like to do, and their proposal includes a mix of retail, uh, apartments and townhouses. Uh, they, they came up with a very creative, uh, uh, concept, which, uh, we all Township officials reviewed, and we gave them our comments as to how they can improve on it, uh, and, and we are meeting with them again on...
October 17th.
The 17th. And hopefully, that meeting will go well, and, uh, the, the planning board will take action on the first, and we will move forward. So this site will be developed, hopefully, in the near future.
And I think the, the one thing that we've gotten in commitment this far is, and we've been clear, that if an agreement is reached and all boards and everything does align, that they would move with, uh, with effort and swiftness in orders to get it done very quickly.
Sounds good.
So, there's no doubt, they want, they, I think both sides are working towards trying to come up with something. Sam's been running in the project, and doing a great job making sure that it takes us to the next level.
Thank you.
Sam, is the, uh, is the property owner looking to redevelop themselves or sell the property to a developer?
No, they are redeveloping the property themselves. They are partnering with another developer, but they are eventually gonna keep ownership of that site.
Still...
That's what, at this time, I mean, things could change.
Go ahead, Jerry, ask.
Where does Melbourne come into this at all? Do, do, do their boards have to get involved in this, or...
Yeah, I, as soon as, as soon as we meet on the 17th, and hopefully, uh, the township and the applicant will have an understanding of what we would like to see at the site, then we will set up a meeting with Melbourne mayor and officials and discuss that with them, and see if they have any issues, concerns, and then at that time, we'll take care of them. But initial, uh, discussion of, with the mayor had with the mayor of, of Melbourne, uh, they, they seem to be very pleased with, with the directions that we're going.
Do their boards have to get involved at all, though, or...
I believe so, because 20 feet, as you know, if that property is within Melbourne Township, so the planning board will eventually approve it.
So they would come to us first?
Yeah.
Once we do our thing?
Well, it'll be simultaneous, because...
Oh.
Melbourne, Melbourne is looking, uh, the stars are aligning, so, we can have, I talked to Sam about this, we are in a position of having good meetings with Melbourne, we can work stuff out, and they're looking forward to moving forward on it. So how it actually orchestrates out, or, or however it happens, it, it will be in the process.
And, and speaking with you earlier, you don't foresee any issue with that Bolterstow Avenue, where the back road there, that used to lead to a gate up there, I know some of the residents in that area are always concerned about if something was being developed there, but in your opinion, it seems...
The, 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 the concept that was submitted keeps that, uh, that entrance closed to, to Bolterstow Avenue, so there will be no impact of residents from traffic.
Except, you know, if there's a fire, police.
Right. Yeah, well, I'm sure we're gonna get into that later on when they come in front of us.
Yeah, we'll have to...
But I just know people start hearing that something's moving.
No.
They are watching on TV.
No, we, we, we actually, that was one of the...
That was first thing.
That was the first thing we discussed with them, is that we want that, uh, that access closed, even when the property is developed.
Understood. Thank you.
Andrew?
I'm good, thank you.
Jared? David? Scott? Nope. Brian? Too many Davids, Scots, Brians. Okay, so, Mr. Mardini, thank you very much for coming before us, we'll look forward to a good update and a good meeting on November 1st.
Thank you.
Here, thank you. Okay, um, the next application is going to be application dash 8 dash 2018S, which is 302-308 Morris Avenue, LLC, uh, 302-308 Morris Avenue, Block 206, Lots 1, 2, and 26. This is preliminary and final site plan for front yard variance and land design. We missed you, we haven't seen you in a while.
Sorry, Jay.
Okay.
Uh, Stephen Hale, uh, representing the applicant, great to see you all again. And, uh, this is the citing redevelopment of this, of this project, of this property, who runs, it's a purely visible...
Talk in the mic a little bit.
Sure. It's, uh, again, a, uh, building that's been vacant for quite some time. My client is the contract purchaser of the property, and intends, and I think you've seen some of the, well, you've seen the plans, and Delanza Palmer prepared a revised rendering that he's going to discuss when he testifies, but, uh, they are looking to, uh, make great improvements to this property. Uh, my client operates a, uh, a land and design company, building design company, is going to operate, he's gonna take the, the structure that's in the front there and renovate that structure, make it, make it office, and then add a, a storage facility, which will be annexed to that. Uh, as we've indicated in the application, all the storage will be inside the building, but we do landscaping, lighting and the like, and there, uh, we've received your departmental comments, both from Mike Disco and from Bob Mike, that were very helpful, that's what the, uh, three visions that have planned for made. In addition, I think, uh, Jen passed out revised rendering that, that submitted, showing that the building, in fact, is going to be closed, uh, that it will not be visible, uh, from, from, uh, any of, any of the storage inside that building.
So you're gonna incorporate all the comments from...
Yes, and, and again, that's why when we get them ahead of time, gives us a chance to respond. So, that's an overview of the project, and, and another comment, that the buildings will be annexed to each other, and will not be an accessory structure. I know both Bob and, and, uh, Mike raised that question. So, what I'd like to do first is to call upon my client, Mr. Christopher Bianciella. Explain a little bit about his business and what he intends to do to this piece of property.
Perfect. Step forward.
Why don't you stand next to me at this point here?
You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in proceedings before the board ties up, you got?
I do.
What's your name, sir?
Christopher Michael Bianciella.
Spell the last part, Chris. Okay, Steve.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Bianciella, you're a member principal of the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, you're, as I indicated, you're under contract to purchase this property, correct?
That's correct.
Can you give the board a little background as to what your, your company is, and where you're presently located?
We're presently located in Union on Vauxhall Road. We are a design-build firm, uh, residential, primarily residential construction. We do, I'd say, 65, 70% residential, 20% municipal and commercial, 5% commercial, somewhere around there. Um, we operate throughout the course of, uh, of New Jersey.
And, uh, with respect to this piece of property, now, Mr. Delanza Palmer's here to explain the site plan in more detail, but the building that's, that's there now, uh, is that you're gonna renovate for office?
That's true, yes.
Okay. And you're also gonna clean up that building?
Yes, we're gonna do some light renovations, uh, cosmetic, a lot of cosmetic.
Talk about the outside of the building.
The outside of building will be, um, primarily removed. Looking to, to have a presence on Morris Ave, obviously, it's a, it's a busy street, a lot of exposure. The outside of the building, I'd like to conform a little bit with what's going on in the downtown, so architecturally, I plan on bringing in the, the colors, the textures, the, some of the same material, and, and to do, uh, put on that building. I don't plan on putting an addition on the building, I just, basically taking the facade, making, uh, it, it conform to, uh, to what, what's there now, and what's hopefully gonna be the rest of the downtown.
So you'll work with the bid or something, you'll...
Yes.
Okay.
And then the, the other building that's gonna be next to that, that's a storage facility?
Yes, gonna be a garage, uh, closed storage facility. A place that we can park trucks, uh, daily, keep them out of the elements. Um, I have some light duty work trucks that I'd like to keep inside. Uh, they're open bed trucks, so a lot of tools, some, some material left in them overnight, it'd be great to, to have them parked inside every day, something I don't have right now.
And generally, how many employees do you have, and what are your hours of operation?
Uh, we have about 15 employees, uh, operation. We start at, uh, 6:30, between 6:30 and 7:00 in the morning, um, at the, at the site, and we'd be leaving that site, operating, you know, to the jobs everywhere in New Jersey, returning back to the site, uh, with the workforce between 6:30 and 7:00 at night.
Any weekend hours?
No.
And the, how about deliveries? Do you expect many deliveries, or, like, can we figure most of that goes to the job site?
Yeah, we rarely have, uh, any material or, or any kind of deliveries coming to the office facilities. Typically, uh, almost all the time, materials are brought right to the job site.
And what about office staff and personnel? How many people?
I have, uh, one office manager and myself typically in the office. I'm actually not in the office all that much, but there's one, uh, office staff who has regular office hours, between 9:00 and 5:00.
And what about the, and I know one of the, uh, the structure, there was a handout, the original submission had an open, uh, uh, parts of the building, this is now all gonna be closed in, this, this storage?
Yes, it will all be closed in, uh, floor to ceiling, uh, walls, um, access overhead doors, um, yeah.
And talk a little bit about, and I know you're kind of here to explain what, how you intend to improve the site itself also.
Uh, well, we've, we've cleaned the, the underbrush that's been growing there for years. We plan on paving a small portion of it, but maintaining, um, open gravel, road access, and lawn, pretty much. Uh, we plan on fencing in the property, uh, six foot, I'd like to put a privacy fence in, I'm concerned with views inside, uh, just making it look better. Plan on putting a tree line, uh, especially along my neighbor, the neighbor's property, that are, um, the back of this, uh, property puts up against the parking lot of the adjacent property. I'd like to put a, a tree line there, I'm concerned with the second story view, looking down into, uh, the property, so I'm gonna put a, a bunch of shade trees along that curb line. The front of the property is going to be professionally landscaped, is what we do, again,
You know I'm a good landscaper?
Yeah. Presenting a proper presence, uh, I'm very concerned with that, the exposure, of course. Uh, I'd like to have a sign on the building, presenting the company, uh, maintaining it that way.
I think whatever signage is proposed is highly conform with the ordinance.
Yeah.
Uh, building, uh, sign, uh, platform, certain permits. I think you prepared a, a rendering?
Can we enter that rendering, when you pass it out?
Make that A1?
Yes, because this hasn't been... So let's mark it as A1, Jen will do it, if you can pass it out to the board.
I have six copies.
Okay, so that's fine, well...
We'll share.
We'll share.
Why don't you, and do you wanna make them all one A1s, one A2s?
Yes, I think that's fine. Glenn, you're opposed?
Could you briefly explain while, while saying it was out, what those renderings show?
We can share. So you're looking at, at three dimensional renderings, elevation, front of the building, how, uh, you know, the, the color may not match exactly what the, the proposed color would be as far as this, the finish on, uh, existing structure, but you can see the solid, what I'd like to put in is a wood fence, uh, the view along Morris Ave, in the first rendering, showing the building, uh, professionally landscaped. The middle picture is pretty much repeating that image, you know, showing that there is pretty good curb appeal as far as the property compared to what it is now.
So any fences and stuff, you're gonna conform, and they're not, you're not asking for any variances for the thing, you'll conform?
I guess the only, there might be a variance, and by move, oh, okay, originally the plans and then this was helpful, comments from your other professionals, required a front, ton of large fence variance, that's in the back.
Okay.
What about the heights, Steve?
Yeah.
Or, or Bob, isn't this fence too high?
Well, initially, I, it was, uh, six feet was, uh, the front yard, and that was variance in the waiver. I, where is, and where is it being moved? It's been looked at sort of front corner of the building.
I mean, their engineer can testify to that.
Well, you don't even have to.
Well, you don't even have to. This is all the zoning board ever did. You'll put a conforming fence in the front yard, and I think it's only got to, I think it can only be, you guys have figured it out. We don't have to waste any time. You're going to put a four foot or a three foot, whatever you're allowed to do in the front yard, and the same with the sides. The sides can go to sixes, I remember it, right, Bob?
All right, so you'll conform to whatever the ordinance-
So you're not looking for fence relief at all, right, Stephen?
Perfect.
Third view is an overall, overall view, overview of the, as you can see, the, the new proposed building is a past existing building, and you can see some of the parking being paved.
Sir, can I interrupt you for one second? I just want to note for the record that Skibowski joined the board. She obviously not vote, but she-
Sorry, I'm late.
Go ahead. Jen, if you just notice that she's-
Yep, got it.
Just to clarify, six feet is, is permitted as long as it's not in the front yard?
As long as it's not in the front yard.
That's correct.
In the front yard can only go, I think, three or four.
Uh, don't think there are any of these fences in the front yard. Let me double check that.
You'll conform. We're not going to waste time with you. You'll conform with whatever you're allowed, right?
And then we did submit, Mr. Lanzapama talked about it in detail, but his revised site layout, which Mr. Lanzapama will testify to, and one of, one of the items, and Chris perhaps you should just briefly touch on that, working with the township for alternate access out, out of the rear of the property, so they can utilize the, the traffic signal.
Yeah, yeah. I'm concerned with accessing Morris Ave driveway, so I actually want to access this property through the municipal lot using the traffic light. For, I mean, but we're not increasing traffic too much here, cars every day, but I think that turn is, is a lot easier to negotiate when you have the traffic light.
So this, this, end of this gravel driveway terminates at, is it the municipal lot behind the Chinese restaurant?
That's right.
Exactly, okay.
Will work with the municipality on whatever permits or requirements are required.
Yeah, they want to use it after the fact and get approval? I don't think that's us.
Yeah, at easement, so.
Yeah.
And from an operational standpoint, do you have an opportunity to review the reports from the, from the municipality? Any problem complying with any of their terms and conditions?
No, not at all.
I have no further questions.
I'm going to, I want to open the board to ask questions, but I have two things. So your testimony is that there will be no storage on site of material?
That's correct.
No outside storage of any plants or anything like that?
Correct.
Other than the ones that are in the ground for the, to make them look-
Growing.
The building is going to be, you're going to work with the bid to come up with some color schematic, because the building's not in great shape right now. It doesn't look great. I think it's good that we're kind of approving that down with Beth and, and Beth on the, on the bid. You guys can come up with something nice that would make it look right.
Hundred percent, yeah.
Perfect. So that, you're fine with that on the condition. Okay, let me start with the board. Jeff, do you want to work your way up?
Who's going to be coming into the property besides your staff? Is it, do you have customers that are usually coming in?
I do not. I-
So it's your staff, so you told them fifteen, seventeen people?
Yeah, if that. A lot of times, the work, some of the workforce goes directly to job sites. So we don't have that many people. I think, on, on average, you'll have five to six people.
And you got parking for, to cover everybody there?
Yes.
And the, the entrance coming in through the back of the municipal lot there, is that, those are the trucks that will be coming through the lot?
Yes, any vehicle.
And the purpose of that is just to avoid being near Morris Avenue entrance, or?
That's right.
I'm just wondering what kind of issue that might be going through a public lot with the big trucks.
That'll have to apply to the governing body, have the township engineer?
It's my understanding that they have already met with the governing body, and, and there was an approval for connection to the, to the municipal lot.
Would, would the municipal lot lose parking spaces, or how would that work?
No.
No?
They'd have to pay the market.
Yeah.
They want a park- Sam, you were at the meeting just-
Yeah, I, I, Sam Mardini. I, I've been discussing this application with this gentleman for a while now, and I went to the township committee. I explained to them that this applicant, this applicant is asking for the use of the township parking lot as egress and ingress. And they, the township approved the application. They will be removing two parking spaces where they will be using that, that parking lot, and in lieu of that, they're going to be making two new parking spaces in that, in that township parking lot. And they will, they also agreed to make some landscape improvements to the township parking lot. Just to remind you, they're not the only one who are using this parking lot, that the, the truck place at the end in the back, they are using it. All the businesses, Hunan Spring and everybody else are also using this, this parking lot, so they're not the only one. And that's why the township-
Is that parking lot going to be used by the hundred thirty units from Gomes?
Yes. Yes, we have.
That, that Gomes property is going to use some of that for parking?
They are actually using entire forty-five spaces, and that is why when we lose two spaces because of this application, they were required to give us two new spaces on that lot, and they are doing that.
So the net effect area is zero, which is they're letting go of S.
I'm just thinking of the truck. I mean, eventually, going in and out of there, if you have the hundred thirty units using it, that parking lot does flood.
I mean, they could use it anyway. It's a public lot. They're just relocating two spots, is basically what they're doing.
The issue degradation of the existing asphalt.
The advantage, Jerry, though, is if I understand it correctly, is those trucks are now going to come in and out at the light instead of trying to force their way onto Morris Avenue absent the light.
And that makes-
So it's going to make better traffic total.
One thing to clarify, just explain the nature of the trucks.
Yeah, they're, they're pickup trucks. They're light duty pickup trucks. We don't have any heavy commercial-
You don't need dump trucks or anything like that. You don't need a CDLA to drive.
Right, right.
You don't want them making a left turn.
Anything more, Andrew?
Well, I mean, I, I think it's, I think it's-
I'm going to go to them in a second. I just want to-
Just because part of my questions, and I don't know if this is the, or some of my questions, or now, or when we hear the reports about the flooding issues there.
Engineer.
Okay.
That's why. David?
I don't have anything specific. I definitely want to hear about the flooding. We know that that lot's been a problem. But, you know, certainly very excited about all the downtown activity that's happening. And what's nice is that this is a building that's, that's one of the first ones, as people start coming into our soon to be redeveloped downtown. So, you know, the upgrades with the landscaping, the upgrades with the building size are certainly incredibly welcome, and I think, you know, really beneficial to the overall plan we have for the area.
Perfect, thank you. Mr. Brendel? Mr. Wisna, sorry, Sil.
I think some of my questions were answered when you're telling me that your, I guess your primary access will be that rear exit. The, the existing apron that leads from the site onto Morris Avenue, I don't know what kind of condition it's in, but I would say it's probably subpar, particularly if you're driving over it frequently. That property has not been used in quite some time. Is there any consideration to reporing any of the sidewalk and/or determining structural integrity of the apron?
Yeah, that whole front, I plan to redo. Oh, I'm sorry, that whole, the whole, the whole front side I plan on-
Okay, because I, my, my concern is that lots, the kids use that to ride their bikes because it's a busy two-way road. And they enter that little fenced off area, and if the sidewalk gets worse, then-
So let's add that you refurbished the sidewalk and then the driveway, apron area, you'll work with our township official, township engineer, our, our planning board engineer and our planner to come up with what it might be. Perfect.
I'm sorry, just real quick. So the state, obviously, that's a state highway, and there were some, there were some trees over there that were recently removed. Right, so, Sam, what?
There were some trees.
Yeah, there's some in the, in the, in the easement between the sidewalk and-
Yeah.
So whatever you, we'll talk about that when we talk with your engineer, but whatever trees that were removed will have to be replaced.
No, no, they don't, because those are state trees.
State trees, well, it's still, it's a matter of whether we want the trees back up from the spot that they-
Yeah, but he can't just plant trees where the state trees were.
No, what they can do is they can relocate, they can figure out how many trees are and relocate them on the property. I mean, they're a landscape company. I mean, they're just going to want it to look nice in here.
But it is a very dark area in general, too, so.
Well, we'll let the engineer talk about lighting when we get there, too. Anything?
To address the flooding issue, that ravine that runs along seventy-eight is the cause of the flooding. That backs up a lot. I'm presently trying to negotiate with the DOT to contract me, if you will, to keep that ravine clear. A lot of the vegetation falls. I've witnessed it. I'm sure you have yourself, but I'd like to keep that clean so it doesn't flood. So, you know, my neighbor would benefit. I would benefit. Some of that parking lot would benefit if we can keep that ravine clear. Certainly get permission from the DOT and then, you know.
Sure, Sam can help you with that.
Yeah, I've contacted them already, so I'm interested in keeping it flooding to a minimum.
Mr. Michaels, any questions?
My only, again, he said that there were fifteen employees, but did you, you say that a number of them go right to the job site? So, because you only have nine parking spaces on the site.
Yeah, most, most of them go right to the job site. You have five and six people pumped in it. Some of them carpool as well.
Plus you have the indoor park.
And plus, there's a municipal lot.
Right, right. So, all right, those are the parking, it's out. Otherwise, I have no other questions for this.
Mr. Disco.
Most are for Mr. Lanza Fama, who's yet to come. I would say that the revised plan that we were presented with says it's a chain link fence. The renderings look like it's a solid, closing fence, so I think we should clarify that. Because my concern would be that this becomes contract yard, and the fence, the solid fence would prevent people from seeing in what is being stored there, so.
Okay.
I think it's important to clarify whether it's an open fence or a closed fence.
That's a good question. To refer to you.
I'd like it to be a closed fence. I think it would look much nicer than a, a chain link fence. A chain link fence is very industrial. It's hard.
I'm with you.
There are vinyl fences that we actually install that are maintenance-free, wood ring-
The fence will be a vinyl fence that'll be confirmed to whatever the township standards are.
Be solid, yeah.
Well, the difference is not the material. You're saying chain link versus, the issue is being able to see in.
Oh, they said vinyl word on word fence.
Yeah.
So where you can't, those, those fences-
That aren't solid.
But on, but on the front of the property, if I understand it correctly, they're limited in height anyway.
In the front yard, they're limited, well, they can't- There cannot be any fence in the front yard and all the other, in all of the yards at six feet. So, but the front yard is anything between the front of the building and the street. So if it lines up with the front of the building, it's, or, or just behind it, it's not considered front yard.
Well, let me clarify then, because based on the renderings, the parking area is going to be fenced in, including along Morris Ave. Am I looking at that correctly? And does that qualify as front yard?
Yeah, then that's, yes, then that's-
And then, so they would then need a variance?
That's correct.
And, and they're not. They're going to, so the rendering may obviously be not exactly what it is, because they're not going to put a fence in the front yard.
What we've done in Mr. Lanza Fama's detail is actually push that, there's enough room there, push that parking area and the fence back to find the front yard of the building.
Okay, but then, so you will still, this plan is still to fence it in, but further back so it doesn't qualify as front yard fencing?
Correct. And it also gives us more area to lose.
Okay, so then, at that point, Mr. Michaels, how tall a fence can they put in if, when it's now considered side yard?
Six feet.
Six feet, okay.
But I think going across the front, you can't, they, they got to work it out with Sam.
Yeah.
To answer your question, I, I think it can only, even if it's parallel to the front of the house, I thought it had to be three and a half or four. The zoning board's done fifty of those, so Sam can work that out, as, as long as it's clear that you're not getting any variance with him. Because zoning board wanted to keep stuff open in all the neighborhoods and stuff.
Right. Okay, so we're going to do, you're going to get your fence stuff all worked out with Sam, and you guys will work it out.
The other thing is that it's a design waiver, not a variance, the way that it's set up in the ordinance.
So they're not requesting any design waivers, any variances. They're going to make it work. And if they decide they need something else, they'll come back to this board on, on, on it and then notice.
There's some existing conditions.
Yes, and he'll address that. So I'm not going to open up the public, I'm going to do the public at the same time with, with any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to make up, bring up one point, maybe just for, for the board to-
Sure.
With now, with an active driveway over there, and that's a pretty tight spot over there on Morris Avenue, if they, if they're going to be coming out of the place and trying to cross, there'll be a yellow line onto a left turn. That's kind of a, a tough turn over there.
That's where they're going around the back.
That's why they're using the back. I mean, we can't-
Well, but the front, the front, the front driveway is still going to be open to traffic.
Sure, most people will hopefully use it for a right-hand turn in or a right-hand turn out. I mean, a left, I mean, to go across, taking their lives in their own hands.
Is it saying you're going to with this?
I mean, I don't know what. I mean, we, we can, you can apply to the governing body for a no left-hand turn.
Well, actually, we, and we got a comment from the traffic division. You probably saw that. So we have no problem. We'll work with the municipality in putting a stop sign there and a right turn.
Yeah, and he's got a-
You know, coming out by the pool, you know, making a left turn.
It's tough, too.
It's almost necessary.
Anywhere on Morris Avenue, a left-hand turn.
So what's the, let me ask this question then. If your primary entrance is at the back of the property anyway, what's the point of maintaining?
Well, I think they want-
Egress, egress from Morris Avenue if we're not, if you're not going to use it. What's the point of that? Why not get some more parking spaces?
I think I just, yeah, if we, if we get local deliveries, the address they're going to use is there. I have to provide for that. Until we, they get to know us, and we'll send them around back.
And we, and we want it to, we still want that to come out of Morris Avenue, Scott, because it gives the, the sense of downtown, the look and the feel.
I don't want it to look like a backyard.
I think they, they're going to a lot of trouble with the township committee to make that work, reduce spots and put landscaping there. It sounds like that their whole goal is to use the back as much as physically possible, because you have the traffic light. So, all right, so let's, let's do this.
Sorry, just one more question. Just to clarify, what is the width of this entrance gate?
The one in the back?
No, the one on the front to Morris.
I don't know if it's specific.
Well, that's an engineer. The engineer can ask that. All right, so we'll just defer that question for the engineer. So with that, let's, anyone here from the public, I'm going to take everything at one time, as opposed to going, see if you just sit right behind your attorney, and let's bring up your engineer.
Now, I'd like to call upon Mr. Michael Lanza Fama.
Michael, please raise your right hand. Swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in proceedings before the board signs up the guy?
I do.
Who are you?
Michael Lanza Fama, L.A.N.Z.A.F.A.M.A. I'm a licensed professional engineer, land surveyor and planner, licensed in the state of New Jersey. I'm a principal with the firm of Casey and Keller Incorporated, two fifty-eight Main Street, Millburn, New Jersey. I've testified before this board on New Jersey.
You've been accepted as an expert in engineering and planning before this board, and your licenses are both valid as of tonight, Michael?
That is correct.
I see, I see no reason. I see, go ahead.
You've already done it. Can't have a do-over on that one.
If you could high level go over this for us, the main points, and then we'll, the board will give questions.
Okay, the property that we have here tonight is actually composed of three tax lots. Lots one, two, and twenty-six, and block two oh six, and it's located in the GC zone. One of the first things we will be doing is merging the lots into a single entity so that we can complete the proposal that we have before you. The lot is approximately point six six acres in size. It has frontage along Morris Avenue, and it also immediately abuts Route seventy-eight, as well as the municipal parking lot to the east and commercial properties to the south and east. There's an existing two and a half story frame structure on the property now. The proposal is to renovate this and continue to use it as office space and studio for the landscape design firm. They will also use it for record storage as well. The building itself, the existing floor area is approximately thirteen hundred and seventy-eight square feet. The proposal involves the addition or, or expansion to the north with a proposed storage building. The building will be thirty feet wide by fifty-nine and a half feet long. And this will be attached to the building as shown in some of the earlier exhibits, Exhibit A1. For example, some of those photographs. This drawing that you currently have before you, you should have eleven by seventeen handouts. These were not submitted with the initial application, because we tried to respond to the various memos. So we want to make this A2.
A2, Jen, A2. We're going to make this A2 when Jen gets back. Mr. Disco, you have a copy?
Okay. The, as I said, the, the proposal is to attach to the existing building the storage building that will be used for the trucks and other equipment that the landscape firm utilizes. We will also be paving an area just to the west of the buildings to allow for circulation into and out of the storage building, as well as creating eight parking spaces, one of which would be a van accessible handicap space. This was done in response to the various review memos from the police department, as well as your planner and engineer. In addition, we took the fence that we originally had forward of the building and moved it back so that it's behind the building. And what that did, that also responded to some other comments we had about excessive impervious surface. So that reduced the amount of impervious surface by over eight hundred square feet. What also gave us the opportunity to introduce a boxwood hedge in front of the fence, as well as the six to seven foot high arborvitae that we're proposing along the streetscape to enhance the appearance of the site. In response to meetings with the adjoining property owner, we took the fence that we originally had along the property line and moved it back five feet and introduced nine red maples, shade trees, along that area. This will improve the appearance of that whole area, offer some shade into the existing parking lot that is along our common boundaries. As you can see, the lot is extremely unusual configuration. We are not seeking any bulk variances with regard to this application. The average setback along Morris Avenue, we determined to be twelve point eight six feet. The existing structure is set back thirteen point six six feet, which, the way your ordinance is written, that the maximum setback that's allowed is the average. So technically, this is an existing non-conforming condition, which I believe your planner's report indicated that no variance would be required for that. As the applicant has pointed out, we're proposing a gravel driveway that would exit out into the parking lot on tax lot six. We would lose two parking spaces there to allow for the access. There'll be a gate at that, at that location that will be operated by the owners and the vehicles as they exit and enter into the site. We will, can also have the exit and entrance still operational out on Morris Avenue. We're proposing, and to add, which is not, was not on the original application, a stop bar, stop sign, and no left turn sign is indicated at that driveway. We've also provided the necessary signage details. All of the parking spaces will be hairpin striped. We're proposing some new lighting fixtures. There'll be LED type fixtures. There'll be one located facing into the site along the Morris Avenue frontage, and then several along the building and one along the Route seventy-eight frontage. On the original plan, we had neglected to indicate what the isolux levels were of those lights. We've now shown that. It's a one and a half foot candle. It produces a minimum of a half foot candle over the entire site. So we don't see that as being a problem. We'll provide adequate lighting for use of the site during the evening hours.
I'm sorry.
Hold on, hold on, we can't do-
Please ask whoever is making that noise to stop.
Yeah, no speaker phone.
On this side, it's like-
In the hallway. It's in the hallway.
You just take it downstairs.
No, no, we have it open. Open public meeting act. That's where they got the meeting. Go ahead.
Right, no, no problem. As you are all aware, the, the property is impacted by the flood hazard area. It is located within what they call a Zone AE. According to the FEMA maps, the flood hazard elevation at this location is ninety-four point three. The existing structure, the finished floor is approximately ninety-five and a half. So the main structure, the existing structure, is, will be above the flood hazard elevation. The existing topography of the site, we're approximately at elevation ninety-three at Morris Avenue, and we dropped to approximately elevation eighty-seven at the rear portion of the site. So it will be subject to flooding. The original proposal was to use an open structure, and the reason we had done that is because then it qualified under the DEP regulations for what's referred to as a permit by rule. If we're going to bring the enclosure all the way down, we have to put flood vents in it, and we will have to seek an individual permit to be able to build this structure from the DEP.
And no construction will be subject to the DEP approvals?
That's correct.
Okay.
To handle the increase in, in impervious surface, we're proposing the installation of four eight-foot diameter by eight-foot deep drywalls. They will be located just to the north of the proposed storage building. They will pick up all the roof water from the existing structure and the proposed structure, as well as the sheet flow from the impervious area. One of the questions that Mr. Disco raised was the soil type. Did we do any soil investigation? We haven't done any site specific. We did look at the soil surveys for Union County. The soil type here has indicated that it's a very well-drained soil with a very rapid percolation rate, and that the water table is in excess of seven feet. So we will have to do some onsite specific testing. We'll do a test pit. And if it turns out that the water table is at seven feet, we'll have to modify- And if it turns out that the water table is at seven feet, we'll have to modify the design, make it more shallow, but still retain the same storage capacity so that, basically, we're taking all of the runoff of the 100-foot storm that's being generated by the impervious surfaces and putting it back into the ground. So we feel very confident that this system will work and work well. As I said before, all the bulk standards are met as far as coverage, FAR, building coverage. Building height is compliant with the ordinance, as well as the side and side setback of the existing and proposed structure. So there really is, you have very many positive aspects of this. You have an opportunity here to improve a site that is truly dilapidated. Here, you're bringing in a new business, a thriving business, that will add vitality to your downtown area. So I would ask that this board act favorably on it, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Can you just, because we need to mark this into evidence, can you just review this with the board about the?
Oh, sure.
Into evidence? Don't break anything while you're at it.
Being that that was handed out, perhaps we could mark that.
We're A3. We're going to mark that as A3.
A3.
Yep. And if you could just high level go over the board, because we did reference it, just for the record.
What I have marked as Exhibit A3 is the elevations of the proposed storage building that's to be constructed on-site. It's a metal-clad building, and you could see that the difference between what we had submitted initially and what we're proposing under A3 is that we brought the building down to the ground level. This building doesn't show the flood vents yet. We still have to work that out with the DEP, but it would allow floodwaters to move freely through the building. You can see that we have three 10-foot overhead doors that would be located into this courtyard area. That's the need for the impervious area here, so that vehicles can maneuver properly into and out of the facility. The man door and windows you see would be along the back wall of the building. What you see is the left end wall would actually be attached to the house, to the existing structure. The building is compliant as to height. It's 19 feet, 4 inches in height.
Okay. There's a lot to take in for the board. What I want to go is through the engineers to get some questions, then we'll go to the boards. It's just more of an engineering type of thing. Mr. Disco.
Mike, I believe your testimony was that the sheet flow was going to enter the drywall?
Some of it will enter the drywall. Yeah, we put a grate on it.
Okay. Is that a change from the original plan? Is it an open grate, an area drain?
I did have a drain on it, I believe we did. The intention was to take some of that surface water and put it into the drywells.
And that's fine. If that's the end of the rule, I need to.
Yes, there is an open grate on one of the drywells that will pick up the sheet flow coming in off of the parking lot. It will come through some of the lawn area first and then into the grate.
Okay, and the gravel driveway is not included in the lot coverage calculation because it's deemed to be a pervious substance, correct?
Correct. It's a pervious surface.
I would just point out for the board, over time, that may change.
When it rains, but let's.
And one of the, I think, one of the reasons to maintain the front driveway is in a flood event.
Right.
The back area is going to get more likely to be flooded, deeper flooding, and also it's a stone roadway. So if you drive on that, that's going to move.
You're not concerned about the gravel, obviously the floods, all the gravel going away, and then it being?
There's a solid.
No, there's no velocity there.
No?
He's also in the business of repairing that kind of thing.
Yeah. He's smiling. Okay. Anything further, Mr. Disco?
I think the big one is it needs the flood hazard area permit.
I think they realize no construction anymore, nothing should happen without getting that DEP approval.
Right.
And the only other thing I had commented, I mean, it's a large paved area just to service access to the building and the nine spaces. Do they need it fully paved, all that area? Certainly if you want to maneuver vehicles around, I can understand, but it's much larger than you think, just to service the nine parking.
It is a big parking.
Right. You have the, where's my exhibit?
Yeah, do you really?
You have the spaces that front, but then you need 24 feet of backup for them to properly maneuver. So that brings you, basically, almost in line with the rear of the existing structure. So there's the possibility that we could knock out a little bit of that pavement. We've already pushed it back. We've knocked out over 800 square feet. So we could take another look at it and see if we can notch out a little bit more and just enough for the vehicles to maneuver, yet at the same time minimize the impervious surface.
As you know, the board is very concerned, especially in this area with flooding, as Andrew will talk. It's one of the big things the Environmental Commission works through, so let's try to kind of figure out what we can do to cut out that. That was a good catch, Mr. Disco. That is a very large area, especially the back area. Probably can cut some of it.
We could certainly have worked with Mr. Disco on modifications to that to make it usable for the applicant, but also minimize the impervious.
Yeah, I think it was more tied into my fear that this was somehow going to become a storage area. Trucks are going to have additional overnight parking of vehicles, equipment. So again, it certainly benefits the lot coverage and the environment and also help them in their DEP permit by minimizing.
Impervious coverage. Okay, that's a good catch.
But again, I'm just pointing it out. It just seems large to me. It seems larger than you need to, just for the accessibility of vehicles that are shown.
Okay. Bob, Mr. Michaels.
Yeah, how is that rear building going to be connected to the front building? Is there going to be any physical connection where they can go from one building to another?
Yeah, that's the intention. There's an existing exit door on the building now, and what we're going to do is tie that right in so we can walk right from the existing building, right into the storage building, so we don't go out into the elements.
Okay, so then this elevation that was submitted would have to be modified to.
Yeah, the entire building package will have to be submitted to the building department for all the renovations. Chris is going to do on the existing building as well.
What's the width of that entrance driveway on Morris Avenue?
The width of the entrance driveway is 12 feet. The existing apron is approximately 12 feet. What we did is we widened the pavement so that vehicles coming in could maneuver. We didn't necessarily want to widen the apron along Morris Avenue because we didn't want to make that the main entrance into the site.
So is that going to be an egress only, or, because at 12 feet, it doesn't function as a two-way driveway?
Right, right. It could be egress only, but as Chris pointed out, the issue we might have, though, is with deliveries. If we have to, we may have to widen that apron slightly so that we can make it at least 20 feet wide, so that you can get two-way movement in and out of there, especially for like a UPS truck or something can pull into the site.
Okay, so the apron would be widened, and then the rest of the throat of that driveway is still at?
No, we have that widened, Mike.
Oh, I see. Okay, that's the lighter, the lighter color there.
Yeah, the gray color there indicates that we're widening it to 20 feet.
Okay, 20?
20.
20, okay.
We're going to go in order because we don't call that a turn. Are you good? Anything further?
Yeah, 20 could function as two-way.
You're good with that? Okay. Mr. Palmsy?
I'm good. Thank you. Mr. Vishna?
So, I want to understand whether, there's just been a lot of discussion over standing water at the rear. There was any evaluation into whether any stormwater management system could be installed and potentially tied into the municipal lot that you're?
Well, we're proposing, our stormwater management system is self-contained for our site.
Yeah.
And it's basically a percolation-type system that relies on groundwater recharge, which is something we want to do. Whether or not we link that into municipal lot at all?
I mean, I think the concerns that I was hearing initially, maybe Jerry brought it up, was the back portion of the lot where you're proposing the access from the municipal lot is historically an area that floods, and I'm not sure that there is a functional stormwater management system back there.
Well, that area is lower on the, the topography is lower. And as Chris pointed out in his testimony, there's an existing drainage ditch that runs the length of the property with large culverts here, and those are almost totally occluded. So his proposal is to go to the DOT, allow him to go in with a backhoe and clean that area out and improve the drainage substantially in that area.
Yeah, but is there any evidence that the drainage that's collecting at the back of the municipal lot is coming from the culvert being overgrown?
Yeah, that seems to be the drainage pattern. Everything's going that way and heading in that direction.
Okay. One other question that you went into some detail on the fencing. I'm not sure if I understood that there was to be fencing between the proposed new building and the edge of that tree line out to Morris Avenue, so it's the boundary of the property?
Correct.
That separates the, so is there a proposal to fence that?
Correct. The entire property would be fenced. We would run a fence along the common boundary with Tax Lot 3. It would then turn into the building just before the existing front porch. Coming across, we push the gate back so it ties into the main part of the house behind the porch. So it gives us the ability for a vehicle to come in and be allowed access through some remote operation.
Okay. So, ahead.
So you can ask questions. You just can't vote.
Yeah, no, my question was going to be about enlarging the entrance because the back entrance is not used for a flood. I would think the front would be too small.
Yeah, we're going to do that.
And that's 20 feet is what you need?
20 feet.
20 feet. Okay, so let's add that as a condition, which I think you did. Mr. Brendel?
I want to go back to what you're talking about in terms of the back entrance. I think you had said before that the back entrance would eventually become the main, hopefully the main egress and ingress of the property. And I think you also just said that you need about 20 feet to safely maneuver two-way traffic. So I think right here it shows 15 feet for the back driveway?
Well, that's just, that's 15 feet for the gravel drive. That's all we really need for his vehicles, for the trucks to come in and out.
So two of them to pass each other safely in 15 feet?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I should be able to do that just fine. If we have to widen it to 18 feet, maybe we'll widen it to 18 feet, but I don't think we really need to.
For deliveries also, you think 15 feet is sufficient?
Well, deliveries wouldn't come in here. Deliveries would come through here, like UPS or mail. We don't get any material deliveries here. The materials, from what Chris described to me, is they go directly to the project site.
Yes. I believe, though, the owner said that you would hope deliveries would all come through the back. Is that correct? So it could be used for deliveries.
Yeah, if they knew where to go. See, that's the problem. If you order something from Amazon, for example, they're going to come to the front door.
Nobody's ever coming.
Through the back unless they're working there. No one's going back. Anything further, Mr. Barnett?
No.
Mr. Barnett?
The gate at the back, would that be closed gate that the trucks can only get in using?
Some kind of a fob or something.
Okay, good. I just, I would want to make sure that no one from the public wanders in there and try to beat the light or something like that.
Let's add that, Mr. Keens, as a condition that that's a battery operator.
Slide, might be a slide gate. Probably going to be a slide gate.
Are you sure your client wants that?
Yeah.
All right.
Is that gate automatically closed?
Yeah, with a clicker.
Yeah, I just wouldn't want it to be open because people will drive in there, and you don't want them in there.
Can I, while you're at the gate, how is the front gate going to be operated and when?
You took my question.
Maybe that was mine. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Chris can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's got to be done the same way because we want it to close once somebody leaves or after someone enters. So they would have to get buzzed in, basically, like if it's a UPS truck or someone like that.
And it's set far enough back that you?
Yeah, that's why we set it back here.
UPS will be able to pull in. They don't have to go through the gate.
Yep. Okay. Mr. Barnett, anything further?
No, I really liked the gate answer.
Okay, good. Okay, so I just have two questions. It determines to lighting. You talked about lighting on the property. Obviously, it's not going to spill on tomorrow's avenue.
That's correct.
Okay, now, I tend to imagine that there won't be that much traffic there on the site at, when it's dark, but it's possible for 30, 5 o'clock in the evening. What about headlight glare on tomorrow's avenue?
Well, you're going to have the solid fence and then the boxwood hedge.
So that should be, you think that's sufficient?
Yeah, that'll block that off.
Okay, that was only a question. Sharon? Andrew?
Two issues. When we push back the parking spaces in the front and establish that fence on the side of the house, we're putting grass in where the parking spaces are now indicated?
Correct. Well, when we pushed it back, we eliminated the pavement that we had originally proposed, and instead we're proposing a lawn with a boxwood hedge. So that was new to the plan. That was not on the original plan.
But as I understand it, is that A2 you're looking at now?
Yes.
Still, because we're moving the fence back, those parking spaces are going to be pushed back further than what's shown on E2? Or am I misunderstanding?
No, no, we already moved it back. The original plan that was submitted had the fence eight feet further. So we were in the front yard. We were in front of the existing building. So we're moving the fence back to a minimum of 14 feet from the right-of-way of Morris Avenue. That would put it behind the building, so it's not technically in the front yard.
And that 14 feet is all now grass and hedge?
Correct.
Okay, and then I assume, Mr. Michaels, or Sam, whatever Sam wanted, if we're going to have these fob-operated gates, I assume they're required to coordinate that with police and fire?
Sure.
I, you know what, I made it simpler. I said, they should come up with a proposal. I don't know whether fobs are going to work or whether they're going to want a combination. So I just put that they'll install gates at the front and the back if you approve it, subject to final review and approval by the township engineer. That way you get the right width and everything else.
And I'm just concerned about emergency access.
Yeah, Sam goes to the fire.
Yeah, okay, good. Then I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Jerry?
Yeah, my concerns, I guess, were addressed. Do you feel that what they're doing will help with flooding or with the impervious surface?
The new impervious surfaces are being mitigated, so there'll be no net increase in the runoff.
There won't be any.
There won't. And I believe, and Mr. Lanza Fama could verify this, the submittal that you made from the original submittal, which I reviewed, that hasn't been downsized as a result of the?
No, it hasn't.
Okay, so you got a built-in 800-square-foot credit now into it.
And they've already agreed to take some of that back part off, working with you on that as well, so there'll be further.
And we'll keep the detention system in the same size.
Yes, that's good.
They still have to go to the state, and again, if there's grading issues, they may have to create storage on the site to offset that if there's what's called NJDP fill. So that'll have to come, so it's subject to, of course.
Yeah, that's my biggest concern. The rest of it, I'm very happy to see something that will look a lot better than it looks now, but just for the rest of that area, what's coming down the road, hopefully, with downtown and so on, that's my biggest concern.
Jeff? Thank you, Jerry.
How many trucks are there being on the property?
I believe Chris had 12, five to 12, but most of them are kept at the job site. The ones that do come back will all be brought into the building. There'll be no trucks parked overnight.
So no, nothing out in the yard?
Yeah, because, as he said, he's got late-duty pickup trucks. All their equipment is stored in the flatbed in the back, and they're not covered. So he wants to keep them, protect them from the elements. He wants to put them inside the building.
All the gray area, the gravel road, the park lot area, strictly for maneuvering the trucks? There's no outdoor work being done?
That is correct. Yeah, any maintenance on the equipment, like he has some backhoes and some front-end loaders. When they're brought here, they're brought into the building so they can be worked on inside the building, and then they're brought back to the job site.
Okay, do you have anything further?
We have no further witnesses.
Okay, so at this point in time, I want, let them both stay up there. I'm going to open this matter to the public. Any one of the member of the public that wish to speak on application 8-2018-S, 302-308-Morris-Avenue LLC, come forward. State your name and, for the record.
William Sinikowicz, 21 Walnut Court, Springfield.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in proceedings before the board signs up for God?
Openly, God.
How do you spell your last name, Bill? Thank you.
All right, fast question. Does anybody know what we're talking about? I mean, I don't want to be stupid, but nobody knows where Walnut Court is. Okay, I'm not against what these guys want to do. I lived there 38 years, September. It's been a thump, and what they want to do is improve it. But I want a couple of questions. What are we going to do to protect the Revolutionary War cemetery that is filled with veterans? What's the elevation of the park lot dropping down to Walnut Court? I'm in a flood zone.
Okay, wait, wait, you're asking three questions. So let's start with the first one.
I think you're on a different application.
Wait, wait, wait.
Let's see.
Do you know, this is the property, is there, is there a veteran cemetery near there, Michael?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, you're talking about the other...
This is by 78.
Is it a veteran cemetery?
We don't think, we think...
No, that's our...
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Michael, would you...
You're thinking of the other projects that's next to the...
I believe you're, it's further to the east.
This is down by 78 Overpass.
Yeah. This is the next application.
So how are we going to protect it?
Well, that's the next application.
Oh, okay. So that's your next one?
No, that's quite all right.
All right. So we don't know what the elevation is in that park lot down at Walnut Court?
I believe the natural topography is much higher here than at Walnut Court.
Correct.
So everything is draining in that general direction.
All right. So you're making two 8-foot pitch bases?
Making four. Four 8-foot diameter, 8-foot deep dry wells. No, no. All right, right in here, right in the central portion of the site. So that'll intercept all the impervious surface before it exits the site.
Just a couple, I don't want to steer you. Now, what's happening where the existing building, which was Beacon Hill or whatever, running along Walnut Court? What is happening there? Are you building a parroted wall, a brick wall?
Yeah, this is, that's the application after this.
That's another one?
Yeah, that's the...
This is, this is closer to, this is closer to like when you're going by the pool. This one's down from where you're thinking. It's past the, by the underpass on 78. Like going towards the pool.
This is the Chinese restaurant.
Right.
Yeah, by the Chinese restaurant.
By the Chinese restaurant, yeah.
Yeah, you're just the wrong application. You're on the next.
You're allowed. You're a grandpa and a veteran, so you're allowed.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that wish to come forward on this application?
Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in the proceedings before the board ties up, you got?
Yes.
What's your name, sir?
Kenneth Gruskin, G-R-U-S-K-I-N. And I'm the property owner for 294 Morris Avenue, which is adjacent to the subject property. So I just wanted to say that I had the opportunity to meet with the applicant, and we went through a few things, and he made some accommodations for some of our requests. So obviously, based on what we've been looking at and what's been going on, it's certainly an improvement. So I'm here to support the application. Certainly, I know more times people come out to fight it, but I'm here to say that I think it'd be good to see something happen there. It's obviously, you know, going to help that into the downtown, so I think it would be good. You know, certainly, we appreciate that he's moving the fence on the rear of the property back to leave a planting trees on our side. Even though it's his property, we'll have the benefit of looking at that, so that's appreciative. I appreciate the board watching out for the flooding as we, my building particularly has been flooded once. We had the whole basement had to be gutted, and we do have the flood wall, so anything that can be done there is critical. I'm not sure that changing the parameters of what actually happens there is, can be controlled by one lot. I think it's larger than that, but certainly, anything that can be done to, you know, put the pieces together, I think will be valuable. The only comment I would have is that I know that you were talking about the fence, and there's been some clarification. We would definitely support it's a solid fence, preferably, they do make chain links that you put the vinyl slats in. We don't want that, and he said it's going to be some kind of, we'll call it a wood look. Could be a vinyl, but a solid look like that, we would think that's ideal. The only suggestion I'm going to put on my bid hat for a second, I'm also a member of the bid, and suggest that the fence that's along the Morris Avenue maybe, doesn't have to be the same fence that's around the back, because it is along the street, so you may want to consider something that would fit into the downtown aesthetic rather than the same fence that's in the back. In the back, it's about visual privacy and, you know, all that good stuff. In the front, there's visual privacy, but it's also going to fit into the architectural vernacular of the downtown.
That's a good point. Mr. Hale, is that an issue to, for the front?
That's the plan.
So that's the plan. So I think we've already discussed that you're going to go to the bid, spend some time with them. Seems like you did something very nice with the neighbor property owner. He seems comfortable, which is good. Any other members of the public that wish to speak on this application, not the next application?
Your neighbor, by the way, happens to be very good at, at design and urban planning and has been very instrumental in the whole downtown plan. So be very lucky to have the expert right next to you.
Do you have anything further?
We have nothing further.
Okay. So I'm going to close this part of the public and open it back to the board. Mr. Keens, can you, you wrote a lot. I can't read it. Could you mind reading it to the, into the...
Well, let me just, Steve, it's preliminary and final site plan approval. Did you get counted?
Not, not as yet.
And you're going to need solar and sediment control?
Correct.
And you comply, you're willing to agree to everything Bob's report and Mike's report?
Correct.
All right. So suggested conditions that came up, I think, during the hearing, and if I miss any, Mr. Hale, will jump all over me, I'm sure. No outside storage of materials. They're going to repair the exterior of the building in accordance, in general accordance with the plans submitted and approved, subject to final review and approval. All of these are going to be, Sammy, all of these are going to be subject to final review and approval by you, unless you think Bob's got to get involved, or Mike, I don't really care. They're going to at least take a look at the condition of the front sidewalk, repair it as is necessary, one with the driveway apron, subject to review and approval with township engineer. They're going to install solid fence around the property, but the front of the property, you're going to come up with some kind of an aesthetic thing that blends more into the downtown, of which you're trying to do anyway, subject to final review and approval of Mr. Mardini. You're going to get flooded, flood hazard area permits from the DEP. You're going to reduce the pavement on the site as much as is possible to try and keep with the intent and spirit of Springfield's ordinance, where we're trying to just allow as much water to percolate in, but you'll work that out with Mr. Mardini also. You're going to increase the width at the back entrance in accordance with specific recommendations of the town engineer. I know that one of the board members suggested 20 feet. I don't know whether it should be 20 or 19 or 18. It sounds like it's probably 20, but we'll have the engineer or Mike Disco look at it. You're going to put in motorized access gates or the like in the front and rear of the property, using an appropriate system. I'm not so sure that the fob system works if you have employees barking and they don't have fobs or somebody wants to do a delivery. So you're going to work that out with Sam, I think, if that's all right with the board, because get the fobs out there and you never get them back or you forget your fob. It just drives everybody crazy. So we're heading away from fobs on our bigger developments. No maintenance work shall take place outside of the structure. Any maintenance that you're doing will be inside. And then just standard stuff, you're going to have to adhere to construction standards if, in fact, you're doing motorized repairs. You know, if you're changing fluids and stuff, you'll have to have certain other things. I don't think that's necessarily anymore within the jurisdiction of the board. I think construction takes care of it, or Mr. Mardini will take care of it. Mr. Chairman, that's what I got.
Can you repeat that again?
No.
One last thing that I...
Sam's got something.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure we add also that they are going to create two parking spaces in the municipal lot. In lieu of those, we are going to lose part of this application.
And, and, thanks, Sam. And they're also going to do some additional landscaping in that area, too.
Correct. Also, that they're going to go to the bid, work with the bid on the design of the front of the building, which I think is, was very good, and thank you very much. That was a very good suggestion. Thank you for that.
Chair, did we want to include something about no left turn out of the front?
They have that in there.
That's already in the plan.
It's already in the plan.
Good.
And then if there's anything they'll work with the governing body to do, and it sounds like they've already been reaching out and working on other stuff. Mr. Lonzo Fama, one question. There's sidewalk, Mr. Wisna talked about sidewalk. I didn't see it on the plan. Is there...
There's an existing concrete sidewalk on the front.
So you're going to fix that if any, with subject to Sam Mardini?
Well, it's also DOT.
DOT, yeah. So you'll, yeah, sometimes if it's a close call, we'd like to get it fixed. I know it's his property. It seems like he wants to do a lot of stuff, and I'm pretty excited about that.
When we widen the driveway, get a DOT out.
Okay.
Do that.
Perfect.
Yeah, and one other thing is revise architectural plans to show the connection between the two, build the addition and the existing building. So it'll be a big resolution for you.
And you mentioned signage, but you agreed to be as a bright. You don't need a variance.
Yeah, that's why, that's why it's not even in here, because they didn't ask for any relief. So then they're just dealing with Sam on that. So no variance.
No variances. Other, so with that, Sam, Glenn read a lot in the record, so can I, with what Glenn said, can I get a motion to approve the application, which is application 8-2018-S 302 to 308 Morris Avenue LLC, with all the conditions that Glenn read in the record? Do you want to read them again?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the, for the approval of application 8-2018-S, preliminary and final site plan with the conditions articulated by our counsel.
Anyone want to second it? Mr. Wisna second it? Go ahead. Real call, Jen, please.
Mr. Barnett?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz? Yes. Mr. Fernandez? Yes. Mr. Pillmanstein? Yes. Mr. Wisna? Yes. Mr. Rosenberg? Yes. Mr. Brendel? Yes. Vice Chair Kessel? Yes. Chairman Tiger?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Well, I want to thank you for a lot of the time and effort into this.
And welcome to Springfield.
It was. So for the board, I'm going to take a five-minute recess, stretch your legs, and then we'll redeem, we'll go back on at 8:30 Eastern.
We've got a couple of questions out here.
Two, nothing. Yes, already. Just like the...
Hey, everyone, we're going to get started. If everyone will take their seats.
Yes, and type in live in the search bar. All right.
Hello, Tom Hizman?
Is everybody condensing their blueprints?
Right. No. Oh, yeah, he was a little thing. As soon as I say we're back in session, you're going to read the application, jump in and say goodbye to everyone. Yeah, I don't know, but I remember, I think I replaced him.
All right, are we sharing this with everyone?
I've looked at it already. I've made my notes.
Mr. Barnett? Mr. Barnett, Mr. Pillmanstein?
Do you know who he is?
Dave.
Dave's.
Dave's. Dave squared.
We're only going for an hour.
Yeah. Please.
I can't do anything until my attorney comes up.
He was the one who I spoke to.
Yeah. Motion. Do we know where Glenn is?
Oh, he's in the back.
Sam, you want to go get Glenn?
Motion for coffee. Motion to send their attorney for a coffee run? Since he's late?
He didn't drink water.
Who took the vending machine out? Dunkin's still open. Who took the vending machine?
Yeah, who did that? Who's the administrator that can put the vending machine back in?
I don't know what caused that.
Sam took it out.
Sam, we need the vending machine back in.
I'll pay for the coffee.
We need to tell the administrator to work on that. We need to tell the administrator to work on that.
I'll pay for the coffee if someone goes and gets it.
Tell Rich, he's on his way. Tell Rich he's on his way. There's Glenn, yes, Rich is coming, I just hung up. Yeah, he can read them in minutes, as long as we don't come to a conclusion tonight.
If, if we, here, I have, um, uh...
His questions, his questions. Yeah, you hold on. Okay, so we're going to call this meeting back into order. For the record, it's 8:32 PM. Where, the next application is Application 7 dash 2018 S, which is SPD Sale LLC, which is 226 Morris Avenue, Block 207, Lots 1 and 2. This is for preliminary and final site plan for mixed-use residential development.
Mr. Chairman, I have a conflict with this resolution, I'd like to recuse myself.
Sure.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Mr. Chairman, before we start, up to what time are you taking testimony?
Uh, an hour, so let's say, you know, give or take, you know, 9:35, and then I'll open it up to the public. I mean, if it seems like we're getting far enough, then we'll evaluate.
You're opening up to the public before we finish all witnesses, I just want to know.
If there's, if, we're going to go through your witnesses up for an hour, then we'll open up to the public. I'm not going to do it one in between, we'll do it all at once for whatever they say, and then if, if we're not finished in this carry till next time, I'm assuming you have the same witnesses back here for the public, and then we should be good by then. So, go ahead, how many witnesses do you have?
I have four.
Okay, and they are?
Well, they are, we have engineering.
Engineering, yeah.
Which is, you want just the professionals?
Yeah, professionals, yeah.
I have engineering.
Yeah.
I have architect. I have traffic, and I have, uh, player. Player.
Okay. Proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, I'm Clara Herelich, I'm appearing on behalf of my client, the applicant, SPD Sale LLC. This does involve, as you stated, Lot 207, Lots 1 and 2. For the benefit of everybody here, Lot 1 is owned by 226 Morris Avenue Limited LLC, and it is currently a, a building that is on that lot.
That's a Century 21, or what used to be.
It was, it was. Lot 2 is at the corner of Morris Avenue and Church Mall, and it's owned by the Township of Springfield, and it's a municipal parking lot. My client, the applicant, is the contract purchaser for Lot 1, and has been the designated conditional redeveloper by the township for Lot 2. What we are proposing, as was stated, is a mixed-use building. It would be three, three-story building, retail on the ground floor, residential above. There is a redevelopment plan that has been prepared for this area, Lot 207, Lots 1 and 2. It was prepared by Phillips, Bryce, Rigel, approved by the Township Committee. It is a plan that dates to February of 2017. It was approved by the Township Committee April 4th, 2017. We're here tonight for the applicant to seek preliminary and final site plan approval with regard to this site, so that this three-story mixed-use building, which will consist of 24 residential units, can be built. The breakdown of those units would be as follows. It would be nine one-bedroom units, 14 two-bedroom units, and one three-bedroom unit. In addition, the commercial retail space would total 3,846 square feet, possibly. It will be broken out as either a one, two, or three retail area. So, depending on what wants to come in, we don't want to limit it to a certain number of stores. We want to be open to what would be best served for the downtown area.
How many square feet, was that again?
3846.
Thank you.
Can you give the breakdown of COA units too at the same time?
Yes, there will be four affordable housing units. We will be in compliance with what is required, so that will be broken down as no one-bedroom units for the affordable housing, and it will be one three-bedroom unit and the remaining two bedrooms.
And that was a change?
Yes, we, we...
That's fine.
Okay, as per Bob Michaels, where, we always said we'd be in compliance...
Just switching it up, that's fine.
Okay, and accordingly, that doesn't change the number of actual units that we are seeing.
That's correct.
You should also be aware that with regard to, um... You should also be aware that with regard to parking onsite, the redevelopment plan requires that that be for the residential use. We are in compliance with the parking for the number of units that are there. That includes tandem parking, which by the plan is allowed for the two- and three-bedroom units. And we have only proposed that for that. We will have a management plan for making sure that no one-bedroom or two- or three-bedroom unit has to share a tandem space. In addition to the preliminary and final site plan approval, since this involves two lots, we are seeking the preliminary and final approval for subdivision lot consolidation.
No subdivision, it's just a merger.
They told me to call. Okay, so the lot consolidation, that those two lots would merge.
That's fine.
So that the board is aware of the building, that its current existence will be demolished, as will the municipal lot, and we will put up, presented more in full by-line professionals. But that is a rendering right there, which we can mark, if you want the color one marked, when we get to it, as an exhibit for this site. I've already stated, uh, the testimony professionals that will be here, I just want to note that through their testimony, they will thoroughly present the site plan and address the comments that were brought to our attention by the reports of Bob Michaels, of Disco, Police and Fire. In an effort to save time, rather than me giving an overview here of the redevelopment plan for our plan, I will just note that this is a well-thought-out plan. We believe that this will certainly enhance the downtown. It's meant to be in the area that's considered the gateway entrance to Morris Avenue. My, my client, the applicant, has gone out of his way to also preserve the historic nature of this area. We will seek, we are seeking, we are in the process of seeking permission for the use of that mural, which is to give him lots' points for the forgotten victory. Springfield has been given permission to use it before, for the 225th, for shirts, for maggots, et cetera. So we're hoping that they'll like the idea of it being used on the building. There's also a representative here from the Historical Society, they're very much in favor of it. This plan was also shown to the bid. My understanding is they like the plan, and that is, that is what we have to say about that until I give you the testimony. I'll only conclude my part by saying, this has been a long time in coming, even back when I was mayor on there, when we brought in these people to, to give us ideas for the redevelopment area. We think that this fits what everybody was looking for with regard to Springfield, and that opened a gateway into Morris Avenue. So that having been said, I'd like to call my first witness, and, and would you, Mr. Blanking, be the one that wants to get his credentials?
We'll, we'll take care of that. Couple things just before we start, I assume notices in order? We, we checked that?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and since you have the dean of court, of stenographers here.
Oh.
Mr. Fishman. I'd like, so that Jen doesn't have to do minutes, can we have a copy of the transcripts after each hearing? And we'll just adopt those, and that way you can make reference, and now you just made a friend of Jen.
More your friend, Richard.
A better friend. You, you agree to that, so this will become the official record then?
Thank you.
Hey, I'm always thinking, we're always thinking of you.
Thanks.
All right, sir.
Okay, so I would like to first call up from Bowler Engineering, Robert Stricker.
Yes.
Bob, would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth in the proceeding before the board tonight, so help you God?
I do.
Name is Robert, last name Spillit?
Stricker, that's S.T.R.E.K.E.R., not with Bowler Engineering, in Warren, New Jersey.
Want to, um, have you appeared before this board before, Bob?
I have, but it's been quite a while, so I can offer my credentials.
What's your educational background?
Sure. I'm a 1997 graduate of Stevens Institute of Technology in Hoboken, New Jersey, where I received my Bachelor of Engineering degree. Since that time, I've been working as a civil engineer, mostly in the site development field. I'm a licensed professional in New Jersey, as well as New York, and I've appeared in front of over 80 municipalities within the state of New Jersey, and I was...
Keep going, we're, we're going to fix it while you're going.
All right, great, and, and I was before this board previously, it might have been the zoning board, though, I can't recall.
You don't look familiar, but...
Many of you.
All these boards look alike after a while.
Yes, exactly. As do the professionals.
Is your, is your license valid as of tonight?
Yes, it is.
And he's only being offered as a licensed civil engineer, is that correct?
That's correct.
Correct.
Board have any questions as to his qualifications?
I think we can accept it.
So, Mr. Stricker, if you went for the board, please go through the site plan and explain to the board the various aspects of it.
Sure, and if I could, can I mark a couple exhibits in now?
Yeah, Mr. Fishman, did you happen to bring those wonderful little yellow tags that I love? Why don't you do that, let's just take one minute. You can give Counsel a whole bunch of them, and she can, she can pre-mark them as we're going along.
Let's pause one second, the mayor's walking in. So that way he can be a part. Perfect timing to hear all the testimony.
Yeah, Counsel, just since the mayor is here, and it doesn't matter whether it's the mayor or a member, I don't think there's any real testimony on the record, because all we did was just qualify Mr. Stricker, so I think the mayor can participate in the hearing and can vote if he so deems he wants to, yes?
Yeah, just give an overview of what...
That, that's right, so that didn't count, and all we did... I'm sorry!
I don't put myself out as a witness.
But we don't count. We don't, we don't count. So, uh, Rich, you find it perfectly, so you can participate and you can vote on this application, because there's been no testimony except prior giving an overview, and we just qualified Mr. Stricker, who has appeared in this municipality and other applications, but he's a licensed civil engineer. Good?
Perfect. Please, go ahead.
Well, just do them as you're going along, you just, just give it to them, we'll start with A1.
Okay, let's start with Exhibit A1. Exhibit A1 is an aerial exhibit prepared by Bowler Engineering dated October 3rd, 2018. Depicts an aerial of the subject property, as well as the surrounding areas. Exhibit A...
Wait, no, 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 we're just going to do them in the order that you're doing them, and just testify to that.
All right.
We'll drop that one off, and that way it won't be confusing, and this will be a little more expeditious in time.
All right, great, so, uh, we, we had a brief introduction. The property on Exhibit A1 is outlined in red, and this is located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Morris Avenue, Mountain Avenue, and Church Mall. Said this is a former Century 21 site. The property consists of point 38 acres of land. It's in a GC district, but it's also within the Block 207 redevelopment area. And for orientation purposes, to the north of the subject property is the cemetery, that we had heard about before. To the east is Church Mall, across the street is the church. To the south of the property is Morris Avenue Shopping Center, with New York Sports Club and the grocery stores located there. To the west of the property is Walnut Court. Beyond that, along Morris Avenue, we have intense retail and commercial use, and I believe Domino's is the closest commercial property on Morris Avenue to us. The property, as it exists today, and I'll use this aerial photo that our client has provided, so if I can mark A2. This is a recent aerial photograph of the subject property, which was provided by the applicant. Should I put this on the front or the back?
You can put it on the front, just in the upper corner.
Yeah, in the skyline, it's good.
Okay. Okay, great, so this photograph depicts the subject property. You can see the existing two-and-a-half-story building, which exists on the lot today. The remainder of the property is a paved parking lot, municipal parking lot. The property itself is almost fully developed, there's very little green space on the property.
Bob, you said you didn't take this, but in your professional opinion, does this accurately depict what's out on the site?
Yeah, I believe it does, I was there right before the meeting, and these construction plates were still there.
They're just not that tall.
Yes.
This is not photo-enhanced or photoshopped or anything, as far as you can tell?
No.
Just an accurate depiction?
It's an accurate depiction, as far as I can tell.
Okay, thank you.
One of the things that are important to note is the, the parking lot is only accessible through Church Mall or through Walnut Court. There's no access out to Morris Avenue, that was an important part of the redevelopment plan. What the applicant is proposing to do, and I will take a sticker for A3, if you don't mind.
It's a good thing you brought her with you. All right, now, hold on, before we stick that one.
Yes.
Is this part of the plans that were submitted as part of the application?
It has been modified from the plans that were submitted.
That's fine, okay. So that's going to be marked as A3, and that's entitled what, Bob?
So Exhibit A3 is a colorized version of Sheet C3 from your plan set. So it's titled Site Layout, but it's been marked as an exhibit with October 3rd, 2018 as a date. So this is the site plan sheet from your set, except it's been colorized for presentational purposes. The proposed landscaping has been shown in overlay to give you an idea of what the build-out of the property would look like. In addition, Exhibit A4 is, sorry. Thank you. Exhibit A4 is a photorealistic rendering of the proposed building, shown in context with the surrounding streets. This was prepared by the architects, who will come up later, hopefully tonight, to speak to you in, in detail about the architectural features. So we have it up for reference, so you can see where we're going, but right now I'm going to focus on A3, which is the proposed site plan. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing improvements on the property, and propose to reconstruct a new three-story mixed-use building. We touched on some of the particulars quickly, so I'll move through those rather quickly as well. We are proposing a total of 43,130 square feet of floor space, in total, across the three floors. On the ground floor, facing Morris Avenue, is proposed to have three tenant retail spaces. They will total 3,846 square feet, I believe that's the same number that you just heard a few moments ago. Three or less, right, there are no tenants identified at this time, so the applicant has laid out three tenant spaces within there, don't plan to exceed that number, but the breakdown and the demising wall between those spaces may shift as the need fits.
Do you have a sign plan for that too, or you'll just call, you'll assign it on?
Sign plan, we'll, we'll...
Comply with whatever...
It'll just comply.
Yeah, you'll, you'll comply with whatever the ordinance...
Correct. Okay, so the second floor and third floor are where the one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units will be. Total of 24 units, four of which, as we said, would be identified as affordable, affordable units. On the ground floor, in addition to the retail space, we have the common area and elevators and lobby space to access the residential on the second and third floor. We also have a parking area with 35 parking spaces that are enclosed within the building itself, so it's not visible to the exterior of the streets, it's a garage on the ground floor. And as you can see on Exhibit A4, the garage is... The finish on the garage on the exterior is seamless with the remainder of the building, so it, it doesn't look like a garage added on. It looks like it's intended to be part of the building, which is a great feature. I said 35 parking stalls are proposed, 32 are required by the ordinance, so we meet the ordinance requirements. The applicant is making use of the ability to have tandem parking spaces for the two- and three-unit residential apartments, and those are indicated on the plans that the board has. Tandem units are basically two parking spaces end-to-end, so nose to tail. So if you have a family living, they have two vehicles, they can have two spaces, and they share who leaves, and they work that out amongst themselves. But the parking stalls and spaces will be assigned. As you move into the building, you will get assigned spaces, so that's how the management will handle that. The garage, an important thing to bring up about the garage is the entries and how we're accessing it. The driveway for the residence to the garage will come off of Church Mall, that's on the east release side of the building. That's the only entry for the residential properties, to get into the parking garage and exit it. We do have another garage door, which is on the west release side of the building, on Walnut Court, but we've identified that for emergency purposes only, so for some reason, there is another way to get out if needed, but everyone will utilize the Church Mall driveway. That driveway, because it's a part of the redevelopment ordinance, which requires it to be, the proposed driveway to be at least 50 feet from Morris Avenue, is located at 59... Sorry, 59.1 feet from Morris Avenue, so we meet that criteria for the driveway location. 59.1 feet from Morris Avenue, so we meet that criteria for the driveway location. And as I said, the cars are all located within the garage, not visible. Garage doors closed, we're not planning to keep them open. There'll be a similar access system that is proposed by the applicant to what we heard about before, either a FOB or some form of access that I'm not qualified to discuss in detail. For the remainder of the site, though, access to the building, obviously, retail faces Morris Avenue, so there's direct access from the Morris Avenue sidewalk to these retail spaces. Residents' access from a doorway located on Church Mall, where we have a formal doorway and hallway to get to the elevators. They can also access through the garage from their parked vehicles, there's a walkway to get there. But no direct access from Morris Avenue to the residential. And likewise, at least the latest version of the plans that I saw, there was no access for the retail to get into the residential either, so there's a separation there. We are proposing new sidewalks, five-foot sidewalk along Church Mall, six-foot sidewalk along Morris Avenue, it'll be new sidewalks.
Sidewalk will conform with the bid?
It will conform with the bid and with the streetscape requirements. In addition, we've taken... We've made use of the setback requirements. First of all, across the plan, what's proposed by the applicant meets all the setback requirements. But in particular, along Morris Avenue, to create a more pedestrian-friendly atmosphere and a planting scheme, we've pushed the building back, as was identified in the redevelopment plan, six feet, and provided planting areas, pedestrian-scale planting areas and accessways, which enhance the movement of pedestrians around the property. Altogether, 247 plants are proposed on this plan. The vast majority of those are focused on the Morris Avenue side. There are plants also proposed on Church Mall to break up the view... Break up the view of the building. If you look at A4, they're represented fairly well on this exhibit. I apologize if I'm blocking the exhibit, but we can see they're mostly shrubs, perennial plantings, and ornamental plantings. As part of the application, there are three trees that exist on the property today that are going to be removed. Our obligation to replace those are six more street trees. However, this area in particular is... It's very difficult to do that. If you recall, and I could probably... If I refer to Exhibit A2, it'll give you a good indication of what we're contesting with. You can see the utility poles that are out on Morris Avenue. In this section, this limited 120-foot section is very encumbered by overhead wires and utility poles. And in addition, what you can't see on A2 is that there's also a sanitary line running underneath the sidewalk in that area. So, it's very limited from the ability and the opportunity to put street trees. So, in lieu of that, the applicant has agreed to pay into the tree fund for the municipality.
That's fair. Mr. Disco, is that... It's too difficult to plant trees, you agree with that?
There's a lot going on there. Certainly, we'd want to introduce tree roots where the sanitary sore is, but it could actually be a detriment to...
Perfect, okay. We'll just put it as a condition, whatever the calculation is, they'll work out what to be on there.
I appreciate that. Lighting, just quickly on lighting. Lighting is proposed at a pedestrian scale here as well. There's a number of soffit lightings, wall sconces, that are proposed on the lower levels of the building, that really intended to illuminate the sidewalk, which is immediately off the building. There are streetlights that are out there that illuminate the road. Our plans include a photometric analysis of potential spill off of the property. We illuminate the sidewalks, but really do not spill much beyond that, so the lighting is really focused downward. There's a total of 20 lights, if you see on our lighting plan, but none of them are higher than 12 feet in the air. From stormwater management standpoint, there's a net reduction in impervious surface as a result of this project, albeit very slight. It's a small lot to start with. Our reduction is 226 square feet of impervious, so essentially, same amount of impervious.
What's that a percentage of the lot approximately?
That is 0.6 percent.
And there's no other way to kind of steal, beg, cheat, to get anything, you know, without changing the integrity of the project? I know that you can potentially pull it up to 100 percent on the site.
Right.
Give or take, but is there any way to do anything to give more stuff?
Have you already examined that?
Okay. I mean, the answer is not significantly, Mr. Chairman. There's... You can see especially the parking garage itself, that's a tight situation, and further condensing that area would be difficult. So, I think the footprint of the building has to stay generally as it is. But in spite of that, though, there are other improvements that we've made. We have... The runoff is now going to be controlled. It'll be discharged into the stormwater system that's located on Morris Avenue, where right now, two-thirds of this lot sheet flows down into the street, and it's uncontrolled. There's approximately a third of the building that... Or a third of the lot, excuse me, that flows sheet flow overland, over Walnut Court, and downward into the stream. That is overland discharge right now, there's no drainage structures in that area. We're going to mimic that same situation with this, but instead of having runoff from a parking lot, it'll be runoff from a roof, so at least it'll be clean water, but it'll follow the same general discharge pathway that it takes today.
So, you're gonna improve the drainage path to take it away from going to Walnut and so forth, and collect it and put it into the storm sewer?
Yes. But there still will be water going towards Walnut.
Yeah.
Yes. Just wanna make sure we're clear. There was a comment in Mr. Disco's letter about...
You're not gonna exacerbate the condition?
No, we are not. No. There was a comment in the letter about flood hazard area and potential flood hazard regulation or jurisdiction on this property, and we can provide the documents that we're finding. We looked at the stream profiles and the flood hazard associated with that profile, and we find that we are above the flood hazard elevation in this area, and we can provide that documentation to your engineer, and hopefully, we can work that out. But we don't see DEP has jurisdiction on this lot. And then, just briefly, from a utility standpoint, gas, electric, telephone is available in Church Mall. We're going to pick up the utilities in that area and bring them to the new building. Water is available on Morris Avenue. That'll be brought to the new building as well from that street. Sanitary is located in Walnut Court. There was also a comment in Mr. Disco's letter about the sanitary, and the slope of the pipe that's in Walnut Court is a little shallow, and the flow through there doesn't necessarily meet DEP's most stringent criteria. So, he suggested that perhaps we can help improve that by making improvements to the lining of a pipe or lining of a manhole, and we wanna be able to work with him to determine the scope of that. But what we want to do is, you know, this is... The area that we're impacting is Walnut Court along our frontage, so obviously, that's where we should focus our work, and that's what we would want to agree to.
Yeah, and we'll talk with him, we'll bring Mr. Mardini out, but, you know, you're gonna ultimately have to get a treatment works approval anyway, so you're gonna have to meet the certain state standards anyway.
Right. Signs, we touched on... We touched on signs earlier. We're showing sign calculations. There's no plan for signs now, we're just saying there will be when a tenant is here, and they will conform to the code, or they'll have to come back and meet with you guys.
I'm gonna stop that now. I've done a lot of redevelopment work, and my suggestion is, if we don't finish tonight, you at least put placeholders on there, and we oughta have a kit of parts or something out there that shows where the sign's gonna go, it's all gotta conform.
Good point.
And I just... I don't care whether you're getting... I don't care what the user is, I think you oughta show where it is, because this is a redevelopment, and there's gonna be all kinds of other conditions as far as I'm concerned. I haven't talked to the board about it, but when we do these, it just makes it so much easier on you guys, and it makes it easier on the municipality, 'cause you know exactly what you bought.
I think that's a good point.
All right, so if you can get it, just figure out where it's going, how it's going, how it's gonna work, because it's just a little different application. This is almost like a form-based code application.
Sure.
And if you want, you could show it all as a three, and then as a two and a one, and, you know, just give the board, so they can come up with two different things.
I hear from our group that we may have that information with a different professional. So, hopefully, it gets addressed later. If not...
I just don't want this stuff to get lost in the shuffle as we're going along.
I appreciate it.
It's gonna be easier, okay?
Yep. And just one more point, I believe, that I need to make is on the trash, there was a couple questions about how trash is being handled. There are trash closets on each of the floors where the trash would be placed. There will be a superintendent at the building that will come twice daily to empty the trash closets and bring them to the garage, where there are designated areas for trash and recycling to be stored.
I think that's gonna be a topic of discussion with our planner with the trash.
Okay.
We'll cover that.
All right, so we'll address that later then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you address specifically number eight in Mr. Disco's letter? That was a question on how we're gonna solve that problem. It's engineering. Do you have a different witness that we're gonna address?
Yeah.
Okay, you can defer, that's fine, we can defer that. That's not a problem, if you're gonna have someone else address that. It's more about the 50-foot thing, kinda educate the board on how to solve for that. But if you wanted to defer that to another witness, absolutely.
Okay. Yes.
Mr. Disco, can you explain that to the board? Number eight?
Number eight?
Yeah.
Yes, so, Section 2.6.4 of the redevelopment plan, for whatever reason, had a requirement that the parking supply, that's the term that was used, has to be at least 50 feet from the Morris Avenue right of way. There's no quantitative dimension from Church Mall, just from Morris Avenue right of way. When Mr. Stricker referred to the driveway access before, I think he was very conservative in his approach with the dimension that he utilized, 'cause he used it from the arc of the joining of the two rightaways there. They don't come to an angle there, they come from an arc. So, he was conservative and gave the shortest distance from that arc. The 50-foot, when you measure it along the linear, or the straight line of the rightofway line along Morris Avenue, some of the tandem parking on the east side of the interior parking area, approach within that 50-foot requirement. So, that's part of the redevelopment plan. I can't speak to the intent of that or why it's there, other people may be able to do that, but that's... Right now, it approaches into that area.
So, do you wanna defer that to the next witness, or do you wanna have him?
Well, first, do you have any... If you're doing questions to this witness, do you have any questions?
Sure, well, first, I wanted you to go with, since it's engineer, you just wanna kind of ask your questions, and we'll open up to the board. I have the garbage, I think Mr. Michaels was gonna reference. Some of these things going, I don't know what the hell they put the 50-foot in.
I don't necessarily have any questions from what he's testified to thus far.
Okay. So, do you want... Anything in your letter you wanna ask questions on? Is there anything you can't beat in his report?
Yeah, that would be a better way.
Other than... Have you reviewed his report? Is there anything in here? I think, you know, like to yourself, some of that things, I mean...
We... Would you ask all of the comments and the planner will address?
Number eight?
Okay. I mean, the driveway...
Well, what I... I'm sorry, I can just make another one. Since we're talking about the comment in here, that I wanna raise an issue, but I wanna make sure that the record is clear. Lot coverage is not an issue.
It's not.
And I wanna make it clear, because that was something Mr. Disco...
That's correct. The... We've... Through the board attorney and through the redevelopment attorney, we've just... They've concluded that you can go up to 100 percent.
We just wanted to make clear the record.
That's correct, so...
I think for the record, and the Bowler engineer could correct me, I think the proposed lot coverage is 90.4 percent. Is that accurate? I believe that.
Yes.
That's off the plan, I believe.
Yes.
Okay, so, we're not talking that it was near 100, but it might have been the issue with the 10 percent reduction.
10 percent.
Could we get to 90? That's all, so...
So, I think we addressed that, but so you know... You were aware that the town has adopted something that was giving everyone 10 percent reduction of lot coverage, but in this case, in the redevelopment plan, that does not exist. So, they could go up to 100, they have 90. I think I had asked before, is there any way to kind of shave off a little bit? It is a small lot, I think it would be great if you could come up with a little bit more, if you can. The plan is the plan.
Okay.
So, that would be not included in your letter.
Yeah, one thing...
Unless you can come up with suggestions to give...
Yeah, one thing I don't think has been touched on yet is, and it may not be Mr. Stricker who will be testifying to this, so the driveway opening, I believe, is scaled to be about 20 feet wide, whereas some of the requirements for the aisle widths and that are 24 feet wide. All of the interior and exterior dimensions work and meet the plan. So, there might just have to be some testimony as to the 20-foot driveway opening vis-à-vis the 24-foot inside and outside.
Outside, is that your traffic?
The architect...
Okay.
The... The architect will tell you about open wide doors.
Sure.
I think it's important to point out Walnut Court is only 12 feet wide as a rightofway, so when the TRC meeting was held, they were very receptive to making the exit or access to Walnut Court an emergency exit only, because it would be very difficult to maneuver out of the site onto a 12-foot two-way traffic road. And so, I think anybody who lives in that area should feel confident that there'll be no additional traffic.
Traffic.
Maybe a reduction.
Reduction, good point. And I'm sure the traffic engineer can say that for any of the public that's here. Good point, Mike.
And I'm just trying to read as, you know, what wasn't touched on.
Well, he ain't going anywhere, you can come back if you haven't.
I don't think there was anything else from Mr. Stricker.
Mr. Michaels, I read your report, 15 pages. You know, if you can kinda go through it, I think there was one big issue that you came up with, that was the only thing that I took from the report, which was the garbage. And out of all your reports, I never saw like pointing out to us to look at this, so if you can give the board some of...
I mean, I see that in what he stated in his testimony, is that a superintendent's going to be collecting it from each floor, there was no trash shoots, and I do see on the ground floor, there's up to areas that are identified for trash and recycling, but they're not delineated at all, but if it's going to be taken by a superintendent and brought down there for storage between pickups, then that's satisfactory. We just wanted to make sure that it was going to be addressed. The other issue was already addressed, but...
So, you would... I mean, the board will have to open it for discussion, but you would support the design waiver in that case, based upon...
Well, I don't think it needs a design waiver, I think they're addressing it, we just wanted it on testimony that because it was unclear in the plans about... Because there are areas identified as trash recycling on residential floors. I think maybe we were talking about the commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah, the commercial, waivers needed for that, 'cause there's... I don't think there's any provision for trash recycling for the commercial.
Will someone be able to testify to that now, or is that...
Yeah, I mean, they would utilize the same trash areas that are located within the garage for the commercial as well as the residential.
Can you show us in the garage?
No, not knowing what the uses are.
Yeah, I know, it's hard.
And you have the plans for the worst case, which are food use.
The areas we're talking about is there's an open space kind of near the A parking that's in the garage. There's also a second space along the northeast corner of the garage. There's a 4.6-foot wide area.
How does it get from the garage to the street? The super...
The super pulls it out, yes.
And for the retail spaces, the garbage would have to go essentially be carried around the sidewalks from the retail spaces to the garage, 'cause there's no interior access, correct?
That... Unless the architect sees something different, so maybe I'll defer that question to them.
Yeah, this is the wrong way.
Yeah. We'll bring up the architect in your order, and that will just preserve the questions, that's all.
Sure.
So, we'll repick that up a little bit. So, let's... I'm gonna open up to the board. Dave? Mr. Wisna?
The... Do we wanna talk about the parking?
No, let's leave the parking.
I have a question, we'll just...
Yeah.
Okay. So, I will hold my question.
So...
The man I wanted to know the garbage on the first floor.
I was trying to figure out how to get it out.
You're going to have the architect. Okay, that's cool, that's cool. Let's reserve the questions. Dave, Dave two?
Do you have an elevation, and tell me if this is for somebody else, of what Walnut Street will look like, or is that an architect question?
We do have it.
I don't know which exhibit it is here, I'm sorry.
Can I make a suggestion?
I think that's it.
That's architect.
I'm going to have a lot of stuff that, depending upon what the board doesn't do on the architectural stuff, I think, I think that's for the architect.
Yeah.
Because we're going to have to really tie that down as to what they're doing.
Let's try to just move off an engineering question.
So, if it's just the skin that you're interested in, or are you interested in something else?
I've got a lot of questions, but I don't know if I can answer them.
Ask them if it's not appropriate, if it's not for this witness, you'll just table it for the next one.
Yeah. This is not a question, but I did want to point out that while not in favor of the township selling that parking lot, part of the original redevelopment plan was to actually make Walnut Court one-way, and access to Walnut Court would be through our township parking lot along the back. This changes that, obviously. So, you know, I'm hoping that, and I would recommend with some of our township representatives here to also take a look at that plan, because there was some very good logic about how that plan handled Walnut Court, which this project is now irrevocably changing. But other than that, I don't know what else to ask this guy.
I would just like to comment, we've gone to that comment. This is a redevelopment plan that was developed for block 207, lot 22, specifically. It's been approved in 2017. Whatever may or may not have been discussed at any other time regarding some use of a municipal lot, Walnut Court, et cetera, et cetera, this supersedes whatever other discussions.
I'm not arguing that point.
I just want to make a point of saying it.
Just stating that.
As part of visiting that idea.
Yeah, no, I'm not arguing that point or saying to restate it, but as the self-appointed father of downtown redevelopment, that changing of Walnut Court's traffic pattern was part of his plan.
We could ask the traffic engineer his thoughts on it, but it does kind of like just came after the fact, so... I have, you know, I have questions with the environmental cleanup, who would that be? Is that him?
Environmental.
Well, what's underneath the parking lot, there was always some discussions on that, who would that be personally? Is that engineering or...
Well, here's what I can only say about this. There is no open public discussion that if anything needs to be taken care of, it is being addressed. I'm not liberty to discuss anything in that regard through Mr. Jensen.
Well, I think you have, well, councillor, how do you want to handle it? I mean, like, that's, that could be a concern, like...
What was the question?
We handled that, excuse me, we handled that at the township meeting, and it is handled.
What are we talking about?
The thought.
So, there may be some, that the use of it over the years was, could have been something that could be environmental, but apparently the governing body is taking care of that.
Our assumption is that...
I'm not liberty to discuss.
The use of...
Alright, so, the bottom line is, they have to get, if they're going to do residential development on a piece of property, they have to get something, whether it's from the EP, I don't even know what it is, I don't need to know what it is.
Well, none of that is our concern.
That's right.
So, we'll just...
I think, I think the concern, folks, is simply that they provide evidence to either the construction department, or Michael, or somebody, that there's receipt of other agency approvals, and if they have an LSRP on the site, I don't know what they have, it doesn't matter, because they're going to have to do it if they're going to design it to residential standards, and if they don't, they'll never get financing and they'll never get anything else.
Absolutely, and we've agreed to comply with whatever is...
Okay, so, Rich, the township governing body addressed that in their sale.
Yes.
Okay, we can move on. That's all my questions. Sharon?
I have questions about parking, but that's not for this witness.
The poor parking guy.
I've got a stormwater question, so I think that applies. Someone's got to ask a question for this witness. Can you just go over again, I got a little lost when you were describing that you said there was going to be no change in the runoff towards the Walnut Court?
Correct.
My understanding is 90% of this lot is now going to be covered with a building, and your runoff is primarily going to be off the roof.
Yes.
And that's going to go into your drain pipes that, if I understood it, are going to feed directly into the stormwater drain, the stormwater system. Am I correct in that?
Most of them.
Okay, well, what's not going into the stormwater system?
That's the, that's the point of conversation. Most of the roof is draining out towards the infrastructure that's in Morris Avenue ultimately. Hard piped before it was surface runoff, now it's going to be piped, so that's an improvement. A portion of the site in the rear was always sheet flowing down over Walnut Court. There are two different areas of drainage, we have to maintain that pattern. So, we are maintaining that. Portions of the roof are designed to runoff towards Walnut Court. There'll be a surface discharge, a splash box, splash block, excuse me, that discharges the water out. So, it's not a pipe discharge across Walnut Court. There'll be a surface discharge like it is today, but it will be at a slightly reduced rate, and it will be a cleaner water than what comes off today.
Now, now, okay, why is that? Why can't the rear portion of the roof feed in with the rest of the system into the stormwater system? Why does anything need to discharge onto Walnut now that we're putting a new building here?
It discharges to Walnut today, they're two separate...
Not interested about today, I want to know about tomorrow.
Right.
Why can't, why must, with this plan, why can't we fix it so nothing has to flow over Walnut?
You have to maintain the drainage patterns. So, if there is an area of the property that flows in a northerly direction, you can't take that water and then send it to the southerly direction to a different drainage area. You have to maintain that split. And part of the analysis that we do is, where's that split point? How much is going to either direction? And what is it after construction? And where do you end up at? So, that's the calculation that we did, it's in the stormwater management report that your professionals reviewed, and it complies with the ordinance and the DEP criteria and your criteria.
Mike, here's my, but leave the criteria aside. You say it must continue flowing in the same pattern it is now.
Yes.
Says who? Is that an ordinance, is that a statute? Is that just common practice in your profession?
No, it's how you analyze drainage. That's...
You're not answering the question. I want to know physically, can you design this building so that no water runoff goes across Walnut and that it all goes into the stormwater system?
Physically, you could, yes.
So, why aren't we?
Because we're following the ordinance and a criteria which allows us to discharge a certain amount of water to the existing watershed like it does today.
In other words, you're refusing to do it, is that...
No, the rules tell me to do it this way.
I'm not asking about the rules, I'm asking about practicality, and why is, why this building is not being designed to avoid having the runoff continue onto Walnut when it doesn't have to? When you said you could design it so it doesn't, so that 100% of the water goes into the stormwater system?
If we sent all the water from the property out to Morris Avenue, there would have to be a significant amount of detention held on the property, because the rate of discharge from this property to Morris Avenue cannot exceed what exists.
Okay, that's an answer. I appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome.
It physically could be done, so it would divert that water that went to Walnut towards Morris Avenue, but they are not...
But there's a rate.
They are not allowed to release that water to the Route 82 in a greater number. So, they would have to detain it in some way.
It's a rate issue, so that you don't flood the system.
Yeah, that makes, that answer makes total sense. Because, you know, you think about the residents that are there, that complain that the whole area is flooded, what Andrew came up with makes total sense, but otherwise, then you would have to put a significant drainage underneath, and that just wouldn't be possible.
My question, I'm done, I'm sorry. On Walnut Court, Sam, you know that we, on that sewer line there, we've had quite a few issues, and I know Mr. Sinkowitz that was here before has come in front of the town many times complaining and having our people go out there to fix the sewer line that's out there now. So, I think that's an issue, I want to know what the impact's going to be to him and everyone else on that sewer line. I know it's an issue across all the way up Mountain, if I'm not mistaken, right? By the DBW building and so on up. Yeah, if you can comment a little bit on, you know, and if there's something that can be done about it.
I believe from the last application, which is the RICA VIL application, the sewer system was actually analyzed to see if the capacity exists, and it was determined there is capacity in the system. The problem we were having with the system were related to people dumping stuff in the system that shouldn't be dumping, like those wipes that's supposed to be flushable wipes, and people just dump them in there, eventually they clog the system. And with education, and we talked to the people responsible, I think we minimized that problem, I don't think we have been out there for a long time. I don't know if you guys did any analysis of the sanitary sewer system, but I think, I think there's capacity.
You mentioned something about the degree or the angle, is that, could that be something that's causing, or that we can address? The angle of it, you said?
My understanding, the slope...
The slope, right.
The slope on the pipe relates to the velocity or the speed of the wastewater through the pipe, right? So, if the slope is too shallow, you don't get enough velocity through the pipe to clean the solids out as it flows. So, that is what the issue is locally in this area right here. Globally, from what I understand, is that there are infiltration issues, maybe damage to structures, you know, throughout the system, but my understanding is locally, that's what the issue is in this spot.
That, yeah, oh, that might lead...
So, you're going to work with our engineer to fix that limited area that's on Walnut that's adjacent to your property?
Yes.
So, Sam, can you comment on that?
Yeah, just one comment, I am not aware of any damage to the system, so if you are aware of something, I'd like to know, because if there is damage, I'm going to fix it.
Okay.
In fact, we've been looking at the entire sewer system for INI problems, and if we find them, we will definitely fix them. So, if you are aware of any, I'd like to know, and I will take...
We can do something with that slope, that would be great.
Sam, what's INI to the board?
Inflow Infiltration.
The whole thing we're doing is town line.
So, when you come back, councillor, when you come back, if you can maybe have something with our engineer on what you're proposing for that area?
I think Mike had something.
Well, it was addressed in comment 19, but the applicant did say he would, in the spirit of what we had asked for, try to comply with that. I have written down, yes.
Yes, that's what we said.
So, in other words, this project is going to create more sanitary discharge in the existing condition, just like we mitigate for stormwater, which is required for ordinance, there is no ordinance that mandates that, but it's a suggestion in this, what was thought to be a troubled area, because when we did have the VIL application...
Yeah, we discussed it.
Mr. Sinkowitz, I hope I'm pronouncing his name correctly, did, did come up and offer comment at that time, so, this may be an area that has problems. We pointed out that the slopes are below state minimum, it's an existing condition, it is what it is. 2 feet per second is what the state decreases the self-cleaning velocity, that's based on the slope. When you don't have the sufficient slope, there's only one way you can get it better, which is to change the roughness of the pipe. So, potentially, the pipe could be lined to be smoother, so that it flows easier, it flows better and is self-cleaning, whereas right now, technically, is a little deficient in the air. Nothing that the applicant created.
No.
But we're certainly going to be sending more flow to that receiving line, the frequency of problems could increase.
So, you'll work with Mr. Disco to come up with something that works? It sounds like you're very willing to, and we appreciate that.
As a self-proclaimed grandfather of redevelopment, I know some of the history in that area.
Can I go back further?
I know, I know. You could be the great-grand. But altogether, we are moving in the right direction.
So, we moved from senior mortar to sewer, but I don't know if I heard the final, like, end game with respect to stormwater going onto Walnut, so we understand why it has to go there and can't get discharged to Morris. But what about, how, is there any possibility of mitigating Walnut Court's drainage through the discharge that's going out there? Is there anything relative to the stormwater management system on Walnut that can have some of this excess stormwater directed to it, and then have that directed back to wherever it goes from there?
I believe Mr. Strecker had already answered the question.
Yeah, he, and I think his answer, Mike, you agreed, was, was we would have to, they'd have to put a tremendous amount of underground drainage on site to be able to hold that, attenuate that water.
To send it, no, that's only to self-contain it and send it back out to Morris.
To Morris, because you can't...
Right, but can you divert it from Walnut and have some underground structure on Walnut?
Is there a way for you to improve some of the drainage on Walnut?
That's the question.
That's, I think, the question.
To alleviate the volume and flow going towards Walnut significantly, no. Unless you...
No, no, not the flow going to it, but from Walnut, then where does it go?
It flows across, it flows, and I'm referring to A1 here, flows across the parking lot and into the stream. That's ultimately where it goes. And from my knowledge, I don't think there's piping or infrastructure there, I think that whole parking lot sheet flows into that stream over there.
My concern was that if there's residents getting flooded now, there's nothing that's happening to mitigate it.
There's nothing to mitigate it anyway. You know, what Andrew came up with was a good suggestion, it just doesn't...
So, but Mr. Strecker, just so I'm clear, what you, your testimony is that in the end, and when this building is built, is in place, the stormwater runoff on Walnut is going to be the same as it is now? It's not going to be worse?
It will not be worse, it'll be better, because it will be reduced, because we are marginally reducing it.
Right, okay, okay.
You're taking some of the...
Right, I just wanted to clarify.
Asphalt collecting on the parking lot.
Hey, Jeff, did you have anything? No, okay. So, you guys have anything further? So, we're going to table the discussion on the 50-foot thing with the parking, with the parking, we're going to table some of the garbage stuff refuge to...
The garbage is going to be solved, right?
Well, I think we wanted to hear testimony on that, to see, to make sure that the board's comfortable with what it is, it sounds like some are, but, you know, and so forth. How long is your next witness, reasonably? Okay. Did pretty quickly? Well, no, I think we want to go for another 10 more minutes, but if we can get the architect in 10, 15 minutes done, let's do it. I think, I think the building looks nice, I think there was just some questions. Sam? Sam, do you have that other art rendering the governing body had? Okay. Why don't, why don't we do this? Yeah, so, let's, let's do this, let's do this. Let me open it up to the public. Our next meeting's November 1st, we're starting at 6:30. I purposely pushed the environmental commission to December as opposed to November to give you guys more time. The only thing we have November for you guys is our redevelopment of Saks if we meet our deadlines and so forth, which, Sam, how long, actually Glenn, how long would that be, that hearing that we would have with Saks coming in to do a redevelopment hearing, to deem an area redevelopment, how long is that going to take us? 30 minutes? Sam? If that, so...
I've done them in five minutes.
Okay, so, that's good, so, you would be the only one from seven?
Well, not that it will take any time, but I will have a generator application coming in, but it's short, it's quick, it's...
Yeah, yeah, so I'm going to hold, okay. So, you have a generator, you could do that first if you want, I don't care, that's, that's fine. Okay, so, what I'm going to do is, let's, I'm not, I'm not going to open up to the public, there's no one from the public here anyway, is there? That wants to speak on that?
Yeah, there is.
Alright, then let's do that, let's do that. Okay, so, at this moment, to speak on engineering issues only, okay? You'll have the comment period at the end, this is just to discuss engineering issues, because they haven't put any other witnesses up for asked questions.
Not to even discuss, it's just to ask them questions on only what he testified.
By two. So, anyone...
And this was, this was...
You can at the, when, when...
At the end.
At the end, at the end. So, at the next meeting, we will be going over all the testimony.
Mr. Chairman, would it make more sense than just to hold all public comment to the
the end, as long as the applicant agrees to bring back all of its witnesses?
Are you going to bring the engineer back next time?
Well, I mean, if there's any other questions for him, I'm not going to have a group here.
Yeah, so, let's, that's a good idea, I'm thinking, I'm going to hold the public comment to the next meeting. That way, at the, that meeting, when we open it up, you'll be able to talk about everything. Okay? Anything that's the architecturals, if you don't like the building look, if it's, you think it's going to have impact on your home, whatever it is, that's the right time to kind of discuss. This way, you can get everything out at once, and you not feel like you're, you're not. So.
November one.
Yeah, so, I'm going to close this, this meeting till November first.
Well, I thought we were bringing up our art.
Glenn feels like we're not going to get done with that, there's a lot of questions on that. So, we're going to hold it till, till November first at six-thirty, but no, that would probably be like six-fifty with, with the thing. So, we're starting earlier, and we publish, we publicly did that already, and I purposely did the environmental commission till December, so you can pretty much get everything done at the whole time. And I didn't. Is that what the board wants to do?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, so with that, thank you. I just please work with.
I just want to make clear, no further notice.
Yeah, no further notice.
No further notice, and I, I would like to make sure, just to save some time, because I was just talking to David about. I hope there's a whole complete materials list. I want to have stuff. I want to have stuff that I can tell exactly what it is that you're building, what the colors are, what the material is, if it's drive it, whatever it is. This is a form-based code, and we're going to treat this completely differently, because it's going to be conditioned, and if that's going to be the exhibit, we're going to explain each one of those materials, that will be part of.
I don't even know what that's doing there, because that's not what we submit.